Good evening. I am Joseph Pereira, Chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals for the City of Fall River. It is 6:00 PM on Thursday, August 18th, 2024.
It's April.
April 16th, the other A month. We are meeting at one government center in the first-floor hearing room pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, Subsection F. I hereby notify all persons in attendance that this meeting is being recorded with both video and audio devices by Fall River Government TV, Mr. Jake Pereira, recording both video and audio versions. If anyone desires to make an audio, video, or combination recording thereof, please notify me now and I shall make a public announcement of your intention. There are seeing none, we move on. Our recording secretary this evening is Nina Krueger, sitting to my immediate right. Present this evening are permanent members, excuse me, John Frank, who is our Vice Chair, James Colkins, sitting next to me, who is our clerk, Dan DePere, Ricky Sahadi, and alternate member Eric Kelly. Also with us, sitting to my far left, is Mr. Dan Aguirre, the Director of Engineering and Planning, and sitting to my far right, Chris Perino, who is the Assistant Planner for the City of Fall River. Nina, have all petitions to be considered been properly advertised and all interested parties notified in accordance with the rules and regulations of the ZBA and Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, as amended?
Yes.
Thereby, I declare the April 18th, 2024, regularly scheduled meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals of the City of Fall River, open for such business as shall regularly come before it. I remind all persons presenting before the Board, including the petitioners, abutters, anyone in support, or anyone opposed to the petition, that your presentation should be limited to three minutes. Questions and responses must be directed through the Chair. The Board's rules and regulations direct the Board to specifically look for information which supports the petitioner's claim. As such, the petitioner should identify and factually support the basis for the petition. I hereby advise the petitioners and all interested persons that this is the Zoning Board of Appeals. The Board's authority exists pursuant to Massachusetts Law, Chapter 40A, and is limited in scope and deals with the use of land as regulated by Chapter 86 of the ordinances of the City of Fall River. Additional permits, licenses, reviews, and/or approvals may be required for the specific development and/or use which is the subject of your petition before the Zoning Board this evening. The clerks in the planning, building, engineering, and licensing departments are competent in the discharge of their duties as clerks. They are, however, not lawyers and not competent to give legal advice. The action taken by this Board has a real and lasting effect upon the title to your real estate. I urge all petitioners to seek competent legal counsel before your petition and after the decision of the Board has been made. For example, there is a city ordinance, 2015-11, Section 10-1, requiring site plan reviews. A copy of the ordinance is available at the City Clerk's Office or from the Planning Department. I remind everyone that the Building Inspector is the zoning enforcement authority, and you are here this evening because the Building Inspector has determined that your proposed action is contrary to the City of Fall River's zoning ordinances. The City Charter, Section 9-18, mandates that all multi-member bodies develop and adopt rules for public comment. We have adopted such a rule, which in short provides for citizens' input on zoning board specific matters at the end of the meeting. If you wish to make any such comment, there is a sign-up sheet on the table in the back. I disclose that an official copy of the Fall River zoning ordinance is available at the City Clerk's Office. One cannot rely on the online zoning ordinance. With that, we shall begin. This will be a little bit longer meeting than usual. We had to move some items over from the prior meeting to this meeting. So let us begin with Item 01, which is the Petition of Selco Partnership, DBA Verizon Wireless, KROV Attorney Michael Jaimo. This is for 2446 Highland Avenue, MAP T23, Lot 4. The applicant seeks a special permit for a radio or television transmission station, including towers related to said use, per Section 86-462 and the Table of Uses in the City of Fall River zoning ordinance, to allow for the installation and operation of a wireless telecommunications facility in an existing structure. The application also seeks a special permit pursuant to 86-425A and 86-462 to alter or change a structure that is non-conforming with respect to height. The property is located in an S single-family zoning district. Counsel, if you please introduce yourself for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Pereira. I'm Michael Jaimo, law firm Robinson &amp; Co., representing the applicant's Selco Partnership. And this is Amy White, who's with Verizon Real Estate. Thank you for hearing our application tonight. We're here requesting a special permit for a radio or television transmitter, which is the way the city regulates wireless facilities, and also to alter a non-conforming structure, although that was out of an abundance of precaution. This site is non-conforming based on height. We're not changing the height of the tower. The purpose is, of the steeple, the purpose is for wireless communications facility at the Catholic Memorial Home to provide coverage serving the nearby areas of Fall River, including areas of deficient service along Highland Avenue, North Main Street, Route 24, Route 79, and surrounding neighborhoods and businesses. This is not a tower. I just want to be very clear about that. It's an installation inside the steeple and attic of the building. The installation and the elevation is up there behind the board. The installation consists of cables and a conduit running up the side of the building from the basement to the attic level, antennas, one in each of the four sides of the steeple, and radio equipment with those antennas. The antennas will be behind what are now windows. Those windows unfortunately would need to be replaced because they create too much heat with the window enclosure. And what happens when antennas are installed in steeples is those kinds of openings are replaced with louvers, something that can move some air through. And it will be replaced with louvers that look exactly like a continuation of the louvers that are below on the same building. The round windows at the top and the rest of the top of that antenna and the cross will not be affected. There will be no noise at this facility. There's no generator. There is an existing dish antenna on the building. It's on the steeple now. The landlord will move that elsewhere on the roof. This use will not be a detriment to the neighborhood. Rather than propose building a new tower, because there was no other location that was an existing tower for Verizon to go on, Verizon identified this building at the top of a hill and is proposing to do something that is very fitting with the way the neighborhood is now. It will be located within the building. It will require minimal changes to the building and will not have any noticeable impact on the neighborhood. And it will, in fact, benefit the neighborhood because it will provide reliable communications for the residents. It's also...
Apologies.
Good service here. It's also an appropriate use of the site because it will not negatively impact property values. It won't create demands at all on city services, and again, will be an amenity to the city because it will enhance telecommunications service, and including service that might be used by city employees or public safety workers in that area. And it also satisfies the criteria of the code for an alteration of a non-conforming structure. The building is non-conforming as to height. The addition of the equipment, the wireless communications facility, will not increase the degree of nonconformity. It will be mostly concealed within the existing steeple, and it won't have any appreciable impact on the appearance of the building or the surrounding neighborhood. And for all those reasons, Verizon requests that you grant the relief requested.
Do you have, and you may have it in the documentation, if I've missed it, I apologize. Do you have a proof of need for the coverage in this area?
We do. There's a report by our radio engineer. Unfortunately, he's the guy who's stuck in traffic.
The C squared report?
By C squared, yes. Yes.
That I've got in front of me right now. Are there graphics in this, Mr. Jaimo?
There are graphics.
Coverage, there are, okay. We just don't have these in the means by which we can show them.
I do not have a means to actually display them, unfortunately. I didn't have, we don't have these on boards. Martin, the person who has the boards is in traffic. But essentially, they're, and this is depicted in the application materials, and I can hold these up and I can turn to the public also with these. This is the proposed site. The white is areas where there's insufficient coverage, both under the 2100 megahertz antenna spectrum and the 700 megahertz spectrum. So those are two spectrum ranges that, radio spectrum ranges that Verizon uses in providing its service. The white areas are areas with deficient coverage under both of those. This is the existing coverage, and that is near the back of that RF report. The proposed coverage is this, and as you can see, the white areas have been largely filled in, in that immediate area. And it provides service in the area that's needed for Verizon. There's both a capacity issue in that area of deficient coverage, and there's also no other site around. Verizon looked at the American Tower, Company Tower, it looked at the ambulance tower and the ambulance tower at 1290 Wilson Road, and it looked at a water tank on Haskell Street. The American Tower at one current street, it was rejected because it's too far outside of the search area. This is a pretty targeted area where the service is needed. The ambulance tower at Wilson Road was also rejected. That's too far in the other direction, outside of the search area. And the water tank, although it's closer to the current site now, it would have exterior visual impacts. We're not going to be able to put this in. The water tank, and it's also uncertain.
Oh, you know, we do have that up now.
Yeah, we were able to get it up.
The Assistant Planner is a wizard, so.
Thank you, President. Okay, good. And the water tank also would have visual impact and would be more in a residential neighborhood setting than this is, although we understand there's residences here, but this is kind of a campus property for the Memorial Home.
Okay. And a good deal of this is not just new coverage, but enhancement of coverage, correct?
It is, yes. Yeah, a lot of traffic, people use their phones more, data and so forth.
Questions from the Board at this point? My phone works here. I won't say whose service that's on there. All right, I will turn to the public at this point. We do have one letter that came in, in opposition. I'm sure if you bear with me, we'll read into the record. This is the North End Neighborhood Association, to the Zoning Board of Appeals, RE 2446 Highland Avenue. Dear Mr. Pereira, I am writing to express the North End Neighborhood Association's opposition to a special permit, request for a radio or television station, transmission station located at 2446 Highland Ave. The NE, NA meetings are held on the third Wednesday of every month, prior to our meeting on 4/17/24. The NEMA posted its agenda attached on its Facebook page, of which there are 654 followers. Verizon's Street 21, 24 informational report, plan, and structural analysis were reviewed and discussed, resulting in a six-zero vote to request that the Fall River's Zoning Board of Appeals deny the granting of this special permit based on the following. Catholic Memorial Home's structure is listed on the city's historical register, and proposed installation of the antenna on its historical steeple will require removal of one of the large windows. A louvered FRP panel would be placed where the window is currently located. Additionally, the placement of these antennas is strategically located to provide additional wireless coverage to a majority of residents in Somerset. A large area of Fall River would also benefit from the installation in mostly wooded and small number of households. A more appropriate location of this antenna would be in Somerset, Mass. If the Fall River, if Fall River is the desired location for such a wireless system, the NEMA would recommend Verizon contact SSTAR on West Street and place the antennas on their smokestack. The smokestack is part of the Board of City Mill complex and more appropriate location for such installations. This came from, signed by Anton J. Dias, who's the president. The agenda is attached. I will not read through the entire thing, and this is signed, I'm taking it by the members who may have been in attendance, of which there are six listed on here, in support of this letter. Is Verizon already on that Board of City Mill smokestack?
I actually don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is the first I've heard of it. I mean...
It is downhill, so.
I was just going to say, it's significantly outside of the ring because it didn't even register in our search for a site, so it must be far enough away that...
I believe there's more than one carrier on that. I would be surprised if one of them is not Verizon, but...
I don't think it's listed.
SS...
I don't think it's listed on this.
It's a smokestack on West Street. It might be listed in the...
It's not.
It's not.
Five, six, seven.
It might be far enough.
There's eight in Florida.
Let me ask another question while you're checking on that. You've made the decision to, only because historical came up, did we get anything from historic preservation?
We did, from, I don't think we could.
Okay. All right.
But there is people in attendance.
Okay. Everybody who'll have a chance to speak that chooses to. Had you considered using frequency transparent glass or some other, something that would be more in concert to what's already there?
We did.
Even if it were frosted or, you know, something that changes a little bit rather than the louvers?
Yes, we did. So the equipment needs ventilation, so even if we were to utilize, you know, RF-friendly windows that mimic the look that's present now, it doesn't solve the issue of overheating of the equipment because the ventilation is not provided for with the complete enclosure of the window itself. So the only way to resolve the overheating of the equipment in such a small confined space is to provide airflow, and the only way to provide airflow would be to put louvers on there. And we chose louvers because there are already existing louvers below and that it's in concert with the style of the building and a typical feature that you would find in cupolas if you weren't going to have windows.
Okay. And I tell you, where is the equipment area itself?
The ground equipment?
Yes.
It's in the attic, space below, yes.
And will that have HVAC to control its temperature?
I would have to...
Or are you mostly concerned about the, obviously, these are the types of antennas that have radios either in them or...
Correct.
...directly behind them?
Correct.
So that's your concern with heat up there?
Yes. Yeah, it's, the ground equipment is not our concern. It's the actual installation in the cupola itself.
Okay.
A small confined area, you know, multiple antennas, multiple radio heads in this small confined area with zero ventilation.
Okay.
So, and they just produce a lot of heat when they operate. So the only way to relieve that issue is to create ventilation.
Okay. Is there anybody present this evening that would care to speak in favor of the project as presented? Hearing none, is there anyone here who would wish to speak in opposition?
I wonder if you would like to respond to the issue of the coverage being predominantly or out of the city?
Sure.
That was raised in the letter.
No, understood. And Somerset is across water. These signals do travel well across water. This is a high site, so there will be coverage that reaches Somerset, but the target area is in Fall River and specifically in the area near where this site is. And that's the reason for the proposal.
Is there any ability to provide cooling in the cupola, if you were to leave glass, or at least on the street-side glass?
There is not. We actually reviewed it.
No vents, no fans, no HVA systems within...
We couldn't put an HVA system, HVA system up in the cupola itself. The construction manager and I talked at length about it, given the concern that we were presented by this civic organization, and it's a confined space that's really an issue. So the real, the only way to resolve it is to put the louvers in, to allow ventilation.
They would have to be on all four sides?
Yes, because we have antennas on every single window.
So it appears, is there going to be a central mast that's going to hold those antennas?
No.
There is not, okay.
No, there's a pipe mount behind each window now.
Behind each window, okay.
Each proposed louver, there's going to be a pipe mount. So in all four, all four of those windows have antennas and radio heads behind them.
I mean, I would say, what is glaring is that we haven't heard from anybody in preservation.
Yeah, well, that's what, specifically if the Neighborhood Association references the historic. So it's on the city's historic structural list.
Right.
That isn't afforded, that isn't afforded the same overview, purview, or jurisdiction of the Preservation Society or the Historic Commission. So it's differing levels of authority. And I would think if any level of permitting would need to go before that Board, that would be something that would go through the Building Department at the time of submission.
If there are no other questions from the Board members, what we're avoiding is a tower. We have a number of similar installations by different carriers in the city, in steeples, et cetera. So this is not something that's new to the city. Let's face it, you know, even I, who forget to turn my ringer off, have, you know, carry my phone, you know, literally 24 hours a day for business and personal use. It's the way of the world, and there are different services, there are different enhancements, et cetera. It's not going to stop growing. And we have a way to, for them to provide coverage in a way that's not going to be seen using a building we already have, et cetera. So with that in mind...
And keep in mind, this is a special permit.
Correct.
So we're lucky that, lucky, I guess, I guess lucky is the right word, that there is a structure to 94 feet?
To the top of the cross.
To the top of the cupola, the center line of the antennas is 67.
So they're almost lucky, again, like as you stated, that they have a structure that they can hide this to a certain extent because they could be petitioning. It is, a tower is allowed by a special permit.
Right.
We would have the height to deal with, however, even that...
Now, that would get pitchforks and torches, I think, yeah, up in this neighborhood.
Does this require bifurcated?
I do not believe so, but by all means, you could make the determination that the non, no more detrimental, and then take the vote to approve, or deny, one way or the other.
I think we should do the bifurcated, yes, by all means, well.
No, just as I'm listening to you, Dan, special permit, meaning that the bifurcation is not required?
Well, no, special permit, that's when bifurcation does come into effect. Because it's the two determinations. One, that it's deemed not more detrimental than the existing use, which is the existing nonconformity.
Yeah, that's what I thought also. I just, I guess I misheard what you were saying, because you said it was not required.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we find that it is not substantially more detrimental to the area and that we approve the request for the special permit.
Second. One vote, this is one vote, or two?
It covers both.
So it's one vote covering, one motion covering both?
Yep. Okay. And did we get a second?
We did get a second from John.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second, and there's a discussion on the motion. In that case, on the motion, John Frank.
Yes.
James Colkins.
Yes.
Dan DePere.
Yes.
Ricky Sahadi.
Yes.
And Chairman Pereira, yes. You were fantastic. Out of the park.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sam.
Item number 02, Dream Big Trust, KROV Attorney Mark L. Levin. This is for 943 County Street, MAP K19, Lot 56. The applicant seeks variance relief to divide the existing parcel into two lots, constructing a single-family dwelling on the newly created lot, waiving lot coverage and area requirements, and convert the existing structure from a two-family dwelling to a four-family dwelling, waiving dimensional requirements, lot coverage, front yard, side yard, rear yard setbacks in a G general zoning district. This is another one of our holdovers from last month. Good evening, Counsel.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and Ms. the Board, Madam Clerk, and professionals Dan and Chris. Of course, I'd just like to present some pictures of this property to those that may not really know it, and that you can pass around at any time you need to be. The last use of this property was as a single-family home, but prior to that, this had been a funeral parlor for many years with multiple parking spaces on the property. The garage itself was used to keep the vehicles that were transporting people to their final destination. This property is huge. It has, it came up for sale because the current owners, who were using it as a two-family home, could not maintain, and as you see the pictures, it's pretty deteriorated. And those are pictures after my client actually had taken a lot of the debris and brush out of the property so he could even find what was, what those lines were. The property itself is unique because where that building is and the size of that building, it sits right on County Street and Earl Street. There's no sideline setbacks there. They are as it exists, as was built before zoning, and the garage is where it is. The reason why we come out of variance and not a special permit for the building alone, which we could have asked for, is because in doing the work and how much renovation needs to be done, my client determined that the extra land to the back where he's asking for a single-family home doesn't give any benefit to this property because it itself contains so many parking spaces. We put down the minimum amount, there's enough parking spaces for another 10 cars there, you know, because of what it was before. But this building is underutilized. I mean, the people that were living there were living on the first floor with a two, as a two-family, and the rest of the building was completely unoccupied. My client intends to rehab the whole building so that there will be four units in this building and obviously has sufficient parking. The land to the rear has no benefit to this property itself or its usage. It just sits there. It does nothing but gather weeds and debris over the years. My client intends to build a single-family home. The problem is because we are waiving certain sidelines and setbacks because of the buildings themselves. You have the garage. We don't have room, and we want to give an adequate size to the single-family dwelling. The properties are de minimis as to the number of square feet that were missing, but based on what we do have and the fact that we have this large building with a garage that we're going to keep with the building, because it didn't make sense to add that to with a single-family home or to give an odd carved-up piece of property. property, we felt this was the best solution to renovate a building, uh, have it useful for, uh, residential property, uh, market rate, and then have a single-family. Now, this neighborhood is a multi-use neighborhood, and my client, before he even got to the point of deciding what to do, did meet with all of the butters to the property, and I believe they dropped off a list, uh, that you have in your files, right? They had put one in it.
Yep.
Okay, so you have that from the neighbors. They really wanna see this place cleaned up, and they really wanna make it useful, and make it look nice, and make people that were, you know, live on the property, uh, may have an ownership interest. So, I think this is a position where this is gonna, uh, not be a detriment to the neighborhood, but have been an enhancement based on its prior use, its current use, and what can be developed out there with ownership, with someone living on, at least in a single-family home of their own, and possibly the multifamily being, if it ever gets sold, for someone to, uh, own this. Uh, my client, the, is a developer who's decided to do this, because he owns property in that area. Uh, he's been looking at this property for a number of years, being in such a bad condition, and it devalues his own multifamily structures that he's kept up very nicely for the neighbors and his tenants. So, this became a great opportunity when it became available. Uh, as you see, the, the hardship itself is where the structure and the size of that structure is, and where it is on that property that prevents it to be carved up a little bit different, because we don't wanna take the garage down. It's a useful garage. It's, it's in good shape and can be used for the tenants. Uh, they could actually put four cars in there, but we're only showing the two, because we don't wanna, we didn't wanna show tandem parking at that point in time.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and that's about it. Thank you.
Okay. If you would, just speak to the, um, specifics of the various variances that, uh, that you require here, just so we...
Uh, well, we're asking that we exceed the two units in the multistructure, 'cause that's what would normally be. So, we would now ask for there to be four units, just because it's a non-conforming structure, and had been converted from a business to a two-family. Now, we're asking that to be increased. Uh, we're asking for the, uh, the side yards and setbacks for that building and the garage to be waived altogether, based on the fact that it exists there.
Correct.
Uh, the problem with the, uh, the, the area is that we're just a little insufficient for a single-family home, uh, at exactly how many square feet? Uh, it is...
Sorry, the...
We're short, we're short like 800 square feet for that lot. Uh, and the coverage is what it is. I mean, the building, the, the, the Lot 1 building is, and the garage is so massive, it uses up a lot of the space in the property. We're not doing exterior work at all. It is what it is. It's only gonna be interior work. Uh, so that was an actual waiver for the, uh, that, and also with a single-family home, 'cause we couldn't give it much land, because of where the garage sits, without having an odd configuration. It uses up a little more land than what would normally be allowed for under its percentage, uh, including the deck and the parking spaces that would be provided. We had to include all that area into the coverage. Um, we have plenty of parking, beside what is shown there. There's, you know, the whole back of it was a parking lot originally, uh, and they could use more parking if they wanted for guests, but we showed the minimum parking requirements to meet the requirements.
Okay. Would you characterize the size of the proposed single-family lot as consistent with the other lots in the neighborhood?
Actually, it's probably as consistent, if not larger, than many of the lots in that neighborhood. These, these, that whole area was built before zoning. So, it's pretty consistent in that area, what they've had over the years. Uh, and most of those properties were smaller lots that were built on, and as the zoning got larger, the, the larger lots, uh, not in this area, because they had already been, uh, existing at that point in time. But they were all different lots, because most of the people have multifamilies. There, there are three families, or eight families, or six families. Uh, you know, the, uh, there's probably, I think, only two or three single families actually in their neighborhood. All the rest of them are multifamily on smaller lots than even, even the one that, that single family's gonna be on.
So, we, we have the curb cut at the, at the garage currently. Where's the curb cut to access the, the balance of these parking spaces that you're providing? Is there a curb cut on Earl Street?
Yeah.
There is another curb cut on Earl Street.
Yep.
There already is when we're that parking area they put, and that's why they put it there, because it already exists at that place.
Just wanted that said, in case anybody has any questions on it, so...
I just want, is that total area in front of the curb cut going to remain paved?
Yes. Okay, I told it is.
Okay.
So, that was included in to the calculations. And then you have the curb cut in front of the garage on County Street, with the...
Any other questions from the board at this point?
Yeah.
Dan?
So, they're asking to exceed the number of units, maximum number of units to, do they have, and did that fall under waving dimensional requirements, or, because they're, they're asking for four units?
Yeah, they asked for, they asked for relief to, to put four units in where, where only three is allowed.
It's a waving dimensional requirement, so...
I guess.
Yeah. Just in the description, we're asking to convert the existing structure
Yeah.
from a two to a four. So, they're, so they're asking for that relief as well.
Yeah, 'cause we were, had, it's a three-family area, so we're asking for, because it didn't make sense. Like I said, the building is so massive. I mean, even inside, the, the units themselves are gonna be massive for the people that are gonna be living there. They'll be like little homes, uh, within the two, two floors.
Yeah. Dan, if you, if you refer to the application itself, it's the first line, the variant, variance or exception requested. And it is to divide the property into two parcels, comma, to convert the existing dwelling, um, to add an additional two units, exceeding that allowed until 8636, so... Dan, do you have anything here?
I, I have one, one question for Attorney Levin, and then one comment, just for the board to consider. Um, in, in dealing with the, the surveyor and your client, did you contemplate at all being able to provide the conforming lot to 5,000 square feet?
They did, but the prob...
And granting an easement for the driveway and parking, for the multi?
Well, I mean, we didn't...
That would eliminate relief of lot area.
For that parcel, could've, but we, they were trying to keep...
No, no, I understand, but it would've eliminated...
Yes, that would've...
Granting of an easement, you don't need zoning relief for. Making a lot 4,000 square feet, you do need zoning relief for. So, do you guys understand what I mean?
Mm-huh.
It's like they could've made that 58-foot depth side of, of the building, another whatever, 15 feet wide, just for the area calculation. And it could've been, been granted an exclusive use easement to the multifamily for driveway and parking. It, it's convoluted. It creates one problem after, but it does eliminate the need for additional zoning relief.
I mean, there, there are a couple places where that could be done, as you just pointed out. So, on that, you know, the, the area along Earl Street, if you will, coming back into the, the larger, the four-family property. The other thing, which I just see as a beast, is lop-off part of that garage.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't go that far.
I would, because that thing's just gonna be an expense to keep up, so...
Yeah. I mean, I, I don't know what, what else they're gonna do in the garage, but, but that would've been a resolution, too.
But again, the, the reason why they drew the line is trying to keep neat boundaries for an owner, so neither one of them have an issue. And I understand the easement thing, but I know when we've had these issues before, it sometimes becomes a problem with neighbors deciding what the easement meant. Do they understand?
Plus, do we need attorneys to write clear easements, so that the owners understand?
And then I have fights over, go to court on certain, these easements. That mean they could put in a pipe, uh, for a water line or a sewer line on top of it, and, you know, so making it a clean line where it is was the decision. I mean, if the board felt that that was a more acceptable thing, that's an easy fix. But it's, you know, again, it puts now two different neighbors in a different position as to the ownership of their land, and the liability for anyone passing over one parcel to get to the other. Uh, you, you hope they have insurance on both of them, so they're covered, but you never know in life. Uh, this makes it clean. Uh, unfortunately, this was the...
It's clean because it's a straight line, but, you know, by, by putting a jog in, it could be, it could be accomplished.
Yeah. I mean, if it was, if it was a couple of feet, you know, maybe, um, it would require about 15 feet to get to the 864, whatever it is. And then the comment to the board was, and again, that, you know, we've, we've been kind of dealing with this case by case, but understand, and the applicant needs to understand, if this gets granted, it is specifically for the structure being shown, the pervious areas shown. It's not a bigger house. It's not a different-shaped house.
Nope.
It's gonna fall within the shape of the house shown on this plan. And that needs to be consistent through vote on every petition. We can't be allowing people to create lots, showing one-size-house, then try to come back and build a larger house. Because when you're contemplating now the granting of a variance on a 4,000-square-foot lot, your mindset is looking at a reasonable 28-by-30-foot structure, not a 28-by-40-foot structure. And that goes into your thinking of, it's a reasonable-sized house on 4,000 square feet. It may not be a reasonable-sized house if they wanna make it 20 feet bigger. So, all of the approvals should be specific to reference the plan for the structure that's being shown.
Yep, good point.
Senator, just to the Attorney Levin.
And I agree with that. I mean, that's why there was a deck shown, exact same size and dimensions.
No, 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 but it's, it's that building at those building setbacks.
Rear, uh, rear exit, which is that little jog on the outside, just to get to the outside of the back of the property, and the size of the lot, and where they, they actually even show the AC pad, so there'd be no confusion that there'd be some other structure out there. So, they were pretty specific to make sure that this is the house they're only gonna build, and only this house. And they're taking down...
Just so they're aware, and you might wanna, we'll ask, you'll ultimately have to ask the surveyor, when you measure from the jog to the corner of the house, it's probably less than 10 feet. So, just understand, when...
He put 10 feet.
When we come, no, 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 no. He doesn't show that dimension.
This one here?
The diagonal. The diagonal from the bump out, the corner, to the corner of the house. If, if it's 10 feet from the deck that's inset, a couple, no, no, other side.
Oh, 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 that corner, okay.
Yeah, so that might be less than 10 feet, which is gonna be a problem, 'cause you're getting relief to 10 feet to side yards.
Well, I think what it is, is, yeah, 'cause the other...
Otherwise, the deck wouldn't be pushed in, a couple, to meet the 10.
And this is as correctly required, done by a licensed surveyor, so...
So, your side yard offset will be 10 feet. So, let's hope when, when they prepare a real plan for site plan review, that they can meet it.
Yeah, if you look at, you've got, you've got two dimensions, let's say 10 feet, that are definitely not the same.
Well, that's because the jog...
Maybe they have, there's an offset, yeah.
Yeah, there's a jog there.
You don't have to deal with it right now.
No, no, but I'm...
It may be an issue.
I'm assuming that...
'Cause you can't slide it any further left.
I understand. I assume that he built it and, uh, designed it properly, and if had to, then the width of the house might be 27 feet if he made a mistake. At least he'd meet that sideline requirement. But that's what he showed as far as the set lot, 'cause that, that line that comes down from, who's that, uh, the back house toward Earl Street, actually, the way they pitched it was to move it along, because there's a concrete curbing structure there that was part of their funeral power, that, uh, that kinda, they use that line for it, and it moves over as it is. So, where you see the, where we picked the point of the deck for the 10 feet, and there's 1.6, I think they figured that, that line went over to give them 10 feet, so they could still make that over.
Just advise him when he does site plan review, he does have the ability to drag this building forward. Front yard setbacks only 12 feet, so he could drag it forward a few feet, so make that, make that 10.
I was trying to make, parking spaces over there, too.
It'll save him one. Yeah.
Yeah.
There, there's room to slide everything forward if you needed to.
Yep.
Right, thank you. Thanks for that information.
That was a freebie.
There's one less revision on site plan review, so...
Absolutely.
My guess is it's gonna come in just like this.
Could be. Any other questions from the board? Eric, you're looking deep thought?
It's an unusual property.
We'll get back to you. It is, it is, but you know what? If that, if that house can get cleaned up, that would be, that would be a bonus on the, uh...
Well, that's why my client was happy when it came on the market. He was the first one at the door, because he said, "I have property around here, and this really brings down my property value," and just because of the way it looks and the way it's been kept up, and the yard. I mean, he's spent, he's had dumpsters out there to clean the yard up.
Yeah. All right. If there's nothing else from the applicant's counsel, if there's nothing else from the board, let's turn to the general public. We do have a petition that was signed by, I think, eight, not 10, uh, local property owners, uh, on both, mostly on County Street, also on Earl Street, um, which is good. And the petition simply reads, "The undersigned hereby state that they are in favor of the variance application applied for, by Michael Cavallo, trustee of Dream Big Trust, to divide the property into two parcels located at 4, uh, 943 County Street, Fall River, Massachusetts, waiving the, um, it was lost, waiving the setback slot coverage in area as applicable, um, converting the existing large dwelling from two units into four units, uh, and construct a single-family dwelling on the newly created lot." That's part of record, if anybody wants to take a look at, uh, the signatures on here. Um, and following up on that, is there anyone present who would wish to speak in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here who would wish to speak in opposition? See, you almost raised your hand. I almost got you. Um, they're hearing none. I turn to the board. We've heard some, uh, some input from engineering. We've, uh, I, I will, I will, again, pick up on that, that admonishment, and I will take it that way. Somebody draws a box on there and says, "That's the house. That's the house." We gotta do it that way.
Mr. Chairman, I move we grant the variance, uh, as presented in the plan, uh, as part of the, uh, site review.
A second. Yeah, a second on that from Dan. In that case, on the motion, Dan De Pair?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Ricky Sahadi?
Yes.
James Colkins?
Yes.
John Frank?
Yes.
And Chairman Perrier, yes. Thank you, council.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to item 03, also carried over from last month. Rodman Omen LLC, care of attorney Arthur D. Frank Jr., 117 N. 125 Carl Street, map E-09, lots 7 and 8. The applicant seeks a special permit per section 86 dash 423B of the city of Fall River zoning ordinance to divide the subject parcel into two lots, with one existing single-family dwelling on each lot, waiving dimensional requirements, frontage setback, and lot coverage, and an R8 single-family zoning district. Council?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Arthur Frank. I'm a lawyer with offices at 209 Bedford Street, Fall River, Massachusetts. I represent, um, your petitioner, Rodman Omen. Uh, the property manager, uh, Mr. Sudo is with me tonight. Uh, he also happens to be a, a member of the LLC. Uh, we, we come before the board tonight, uh, in accordance with section 86, 423B. Uh, these are two houses that are on one large parcel. Uh, we'd like permission to divide it into two parcels, leaving one house on one lot and one on the other. Uh, it is the LLC's, uh, desire, at some point, to place one or, or both of them up for sale. Uh, we feel it's easier to sell one house on one lot versus two houses on one lot. And it is in keeping with, I think, what this city's planning practice has been, that there should be one house on one lot, and not multiple houses on one lot. Uh, if you look at the assessor's databank, I think the, the assessors have used the default code that this house was built in 1900. Well, they, they probably use that for quite a few houses. Mr. Sudo tells me that, and he's in the building trades, that his, by his estimation, the foundation of those two houses dates from the 1920s. So, that would satisfy the requirement that they be, uh, the buildings be in existence since 1954. Uh, there's not gonna be any outward, uh, changes to the buildings. You won't know that there are two different owners of the two houses, uh, if you grant this relief and we go ahead and sell them. Again, we just want the relief of the special permit, uh, under section B of that section of the ordinance, uh, in order to carry out this... Again, we just want the relief of the special permit, uh, under section B of that section of the ordinance, uh, in order to carry out this transaction.
Okay. This had been done before, hadn't it?
No, I was here a number of years ago, where the previous owner wanted to divide the two houses and create a third house lot.
Gotcha.
So, this is a completely different petition, and it's more than two years, so the provisions of section sixteen of forty-eight won't apply. We're well beyond the statutory period.
Yep.
And it's a totally different petition.
It's substantially different regardless.
Yes, and, and I think at that time, I was also asking for a variance, this time, I'm, I'm asking for the special permit under, uh, section eighty-six four twenty-three B.
Okay, very good. Thank you, council. From the board.
As you see, is this standard practice within the city? That, um, one house to one lot, rather than two on one, is standard practice throughout the city?
That, that's, that's what I've heard, uh, from various chairs of this boards, uh, in the forty years that I've been coming to this board, that it, it's better practice to have one house on a lot, rather than have two houses on a lot. And a lot of times, this board is tasked with a situation where one house is behind the other house, and you have to have various easements for parking, for ingress, regress. This one's much cleaner, it's two houses, they each have driveways, they each have parking. Uh, one of the houses, obviously, is gonna have a substantially larger, uh, backyard or side yard than the other house, but that's just where the houses sit on the lot, we can't change where their, their position.
Yeah, the, the previous plan was dramatic, I'm, I'm looking at that right now, not, not good. All right, that, any other questions from the board? Turn to the general public, is anyone here present?
Just to let, do they have separate utilities and everything currently?
Yes.
There, there's no connection between the two properties.
Well, I think this plan shows proposed separation for sewer, I think.
It probably.
Still has to be done, so the standard, standard.
Yeah, separate utilities.
Yeah.
Turn to the general public, is there anyone here to speak in favor of the petition? Anyone here to speak in opposition of the petition? They're hearing none, to the board. Oh, I'm sorry, whoops, sorry.
That, that's okay, uh, my name is Ron Falcon, I'm property owner at one oh six Carl Street, Fall River, Mass. Born and raised on Carl Street, believe it or not, so I've seen everything on Carl Street over almost forty years. First, I, I wanna get clarification, is that twenty-four hundred square foot, one house on twenty-four hundred square foot space? Okay, um, which is far below the normal, I believe, for an R eight in that area. My concern is, um, literal property space for that one piece of property. There is almost no backyard whatsoever, uh, no space for anyone to convene or, uh, do any type of recreation. As someone who has lived in that neighborhood, literally, right there, I grew up playing on that larger portion of that lot, with folks who lived in those houses. To me, I, I, I just can't understand, I, I don't see how that's beneficial to neighboring property values, uh, to leave a single house on a twenty-four hundred square foot lot in that, on that street.
Okay. Um, are, are you with the gentleman?
Hi, my name's Diane Falcon, I'm also, um, at one eleven Carl Street, um, resident, uh, since nineteen seventy-eight. About ten feet, or seven to ten feet away from the two houses, the houses. If the houses were split up, the first house has a tiny little hole, these, these properties get constantly flooded, I have pictures to show you. This is, um, this is what they really deal with there. Um, and, uh, if they split up the two houses, the first house, when he goes to even paint his house, it's one foot from the house, so he'd have to smash his body up to paint his own house on the second house, because that's where the property line would be. Sometimes they park a car in that driveway, they can't even get into that second house. They're just too close together, and there's just not enough property. Now, I have been there for forty-some years, and watched different families living there, and every single family plays on that bigger, on, on what, their backyard looks like a side yard, so, I have merged properties, these are three merged lots, they're actually lots seven, eight, and nine, and I don't know why they're only referencing seven and eight, because there's a third merged lot to this property, they're not discussing here tonight, that I know of. It's certainly not on the paperwork, so, I don't know where it's disappearing to. But, uh, every child played there, previous, a month ago, there were seven children in those two houses, and every single one of them was playing in that, that bigger piece, which looks like a side, but really is their backyard, because there's just no backyard. Those two houses, they, i- if you separate them, the first one, it will have absolutely no land, the second house will not even be able to be painted, it's too close. It, 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 it was meant in the fifties to be merged together, so that there would be more land for people to breathe, and pulling these houses apart is gonna just take and make one family living in a tiny little hole. I'm totally against it.
Okay, I, I have to ask.
Sure.
What might sound like a very stupid question.
Yep.
If the houses already exist.
Yep.
How is it going to be too small to paint a house if the two houses are separated?
Because if you see where the lot ends, like he said, there's gonna be two driveways.
You're saying without going out?
There's only one driveway.
There's one driveway in the middle.
And there's gonna stay one driveway that they share.
Yeah.
So, there'd be no fences, they're gonna share a driveway.
So, they're actually taking that first lot and making it smaller? Because commonly, that first lot is about a foot away from the second house.
The surveyor, on the house to the right of it?
Yeah.
No.
What I'm talking about, on the right of it.
To the left.
As you're facing the house from the street.
Facing the house, the house to the left.
There is, there is currently twelve feet, there's twelve feet between the houses.
There's a driveway.
Right.
Which is occupied by driveway, correct?
Correct.
That's gonna stay.
And, and, and it, that, that was my, my understanding, that driveway was for the first house.
For both houses.
Well, then you're even giving that first house less land, because at least the last people who tried to split it, were gonna, you know, give that first house a little bit more land. I, I'm not even noticing, how much are they saying total land area is there, I can't tell.
Of the entire parcel to start with?
Yep.
Fifteen thousand, six hundred and ninety-six.
Okay, can they just s- split it in two somehow, and give each house?
They could, yes, so, so what's important, and I, I don't know if all the audience spoke yet, but let me intervene here for a second. So, eighty-six four twenty-three B allows for these types of subdivisions when the, the buildings have been in existence prior to fifty-four, exactly as Attorney Frank has stated. However, it's through a special permit, and what's important is that the division is made in a way to maximize the use of the proposed lots, specifically access, parking, and yard areas. So, you could require, you don't have to take what's submitted, you could, for instance, where they're showing the, the parking spaces for house number one twenty-five, you could add additional land from that parcel to the parcel that's only twenty-four hundred square feet. And give them, and give them somewhat of an L-shaped parcel.
And them seven children would have a place to play.
One hundred percent. And you could theoretically, for better access and parking, you could require that one twenty-five have its own driveway to the south of it, and its own parking. You don't have to allow for, there's no reason to allow the common driveway and parking situation when we've got an additional ten thousand square feet of land where they could add other parking. Or use some of that area for the smaller lot, I, I, I have to agree with, with what the, the butter asserts with regards to that. It's one thing when we have lot line to lot line, and the best you can do is, is split it, and be down the middle, the best you can, and get around the building. This has excessive land that you can creatively carve out in a number of different ways, one hundred percent.
So, my, one of my questions is, with all this land, why is that the only driveway?
Well, the only proposed driveway. That was what the, the owners and the engineers came up with, but they're obviously open to any suggestions that this board would, would make, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I mean, if we have a shared driveway on the smaller of the two lots, now you've got to create an easement situation for a shared driveway, and you've got an abundance of land.
You're gonna need an easement no matter what.
Right.
To even provide the parking for one seventeen, unless, let's say you took twenty feet off of the back, like, offset one, twenty feet from number one twenty-five off the back line, and run a line all the way to whatever the side street is there, Ames Street. And give the westerly side of that area to lot one, and leave the corner at, like, a hundred and seven by, I don't know, sixty feet, that corner, to, to the house number two. And then you could actually, if you, if you wanted to, you could provide parking off of Ames Street for number, uh, one seventeen. So, there, there are a number of ways that you could do better with land use on this, for sure.
If that were to happen, then, um, it's, it's almost asking us on the fly to, to approve something that is not before us.
You're not gonna approve anything that's not before you, you're, you're gonna give the applicant, Attorney Frank can only present what his client and what the engineer drew. I can come back, I can come back next month with a new, a new configuration. And come back with a different configuration, after hearing what the concerns are. And I, I'd also like to answer one question, uh, the butterhead mentioned about painting houses. Uh, there is a little-known statute, uh, in the Commonwealth, where if you need to repair the side of your house or paint it, and you don't have enough room for ladders, you can go down to the police station, you can post notice that you're gonna have work done or paint, have your house painted. The, the chief of police can determine whether you need to post a bond, and you then have permission from the chief to put the ladders in your neighbor's yard. And if this board needs a copy of.
If there's room to even do that.
And if, if, I'll, I'll bring a copy of the statute next month, so the board will have it.
It's not the zoning board of appeals.
I love, I love the obscure, it's.
I forgot to turn this one in, this is the driveway between the houses they're talking about.
Right.
There's just no room at all here, they've been out for a hundred years.
Right, so the room doesn't change, I guess is the point, and, and I understand what you're saying, we've got a.
And they're talking flooded every single rain, it's terrible there.
Where's that coming from? Because if it's coming from the street.
It's been there forever, I, I had hundred year old people tell me they used the ice cage there, literally.
I, has anybody talked to, um, DPW about this?
Tried to talk to different people about, you know, the.
Did I call them?
And if they did something there, even, our fear more is, if you give this small house, no, the second house, they're gonna, he's gonna come up for it, and he's gonna split up, and the big lot is gonna build more.
Well, we could. We could, we could say no for the subdivision, so.
But once he does build that, we're worried about that more.
Okay. That's a reasonable issue, but that looks like, part of that's, part of that's a city issue, I think, because it's right out to the street.
Is your client available to, to alter and just coming back with a refact?
Yeah, I'll, I'll come back with another plan next month, that's not a problem.
There, there would, could they have addressed the concerns of the.
Yeah, absolutely, and, and I'll, I'll look into this issue about the water, uh, and I'll, I'll also, I'll, I'll quiz the, the water and sewer department, if they know about it, and if in fact, they have some solution for it.
If you look at the photographs that, that were presented to us, it, it's right out to the street, so, it's, whether it's coming from the street or coming from this property into the street, I would think that the city would, would wanna get involved with it. Not our job to kick it over to them, but, um, if you would do that, just in the course of, of checking this.
I will.
That could be helpful, and come back with some other obscure law that I didn't know about. Would you care to ask for a continuance?
I would. I don't know if opposition finished.
Oh, yeah, it's true.
No, 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 we, we wanna hear from you, we wanna hear from you.
She wants to oppose, but she said we said everything that she would have said.
Would you want your name on the record, nonetheless?
Yeah, I can just put your name on the record.
Desiree Dupont.
And you will have the opportunity to speak again on the revised plan at the next meeting.
We, that's another thing, too, I'm only a butter that you got, you know, Ames, there's so many abutters.
So, landowners who get, uh, who gets notified.
She's a, she's a landowner right here.
For which, for which property?
Eighty-one Ames. Ames.
Can you check the list? She'll, she'll check the abutters, which the assessor's office makes, so if you are in a butter, in a butter to in a butter, or across the street, then you'll be notified, if you are.
There's so many, there's so many that never got notified.
She'll check the list.
Is that your request to?
I, I do, and if, if, if the board needs me to sign, uh, an extension of time, um, I can work with your clerk to make sure that's on file.
Yeah, because this is one of the, this is one of the tables, so we don't wanna get into the issue of the structure of the plan.
No, it's just.
All right, listen, listen, we got three conversations, one conversation at a time, please.
I sense a bit as well, okay? If you give, um, if you see this land, if, if we need to have our, to confirm, you have to have confirmed eight houses for each lot.
Correct.
So, the reason we, we come to the board is because the land is not confirmed, if I give both of them, I still need a special permit. So, the, that's why I, uh, I mean, I understand your position, I willing to give the land, whatever the house, the, the, the rest of the land, to put on one house, so it will be confirmed, because you need eight houses, square feet on that, so eight.
Right, so you could give it eight thousand, eight thousand and one, if you want to be generous.
Yeah. For one lot, but the other lot will be not confirmed, if I give the lot.
It's gonna be a lot closer than what it is now.
Yeah, but, I'm just, like, I was talking to Glenn, the, the building commission, and then, he's, he know, we will discuss all this matter, because I wanna certify the neighbor, too, you know, you wanna sell a house, I wanna make sure everybody's happy. You know, they was complaining, because we, we only have the two houses, like Mr. Frank said, it's hard for you to sell it, because it would be too much money, if you divide, people will afford.
Understood, so.
Right.
We're gonna come back next month. Through your attorney, you can either request a continuance, or you can ask the board to vote, two options. We're gonna have a continuance, we'll come back next month.
Anybody else to speak in opposition? Are you satisfied with the, the abutters list at this point?
No, I think we need a new affairs list.
I think, I think it's wrong, too.
I don't understand that.
We'll look into it.
That has to be addressed, our departments will address that with.
The applicant does not create that, they submit a form to the assessor's office, and the assessor's office provides an abutters list.
Thank you.
Okay.
My, my guess may be is when they looked at it, they, maybe they did not know that the lot on the corner, because when this was originally submitted, I think they only, I think the application only said seven, I think we changed it to make you add seven and eight.
It said seven, then seven and eight.
So, when, so when the abutters list went through.
That's probably exactly what happened.
We probably didn't get a new one, that was for seven and eight, so.
But it's seven, eight, and nine, there's a seven, eight, and a nine.
Oh, there's a nine?
It's seven, eight, and nine.
I think eight and nine have already been.
They, they've been merged.
Have been merged, it's one task.
Eight, nine emerged.
Seven, eight, and nine emerged, I could show you.
I, I understand, but as far as the assessor's records show, there is no nine anymore.
Yeah.
Eight and nine are now eight.
This, this abutters list is just for seven, it says.
Yep.
That makes sense. Then, tried to split up the property.
Understood.
Um, somehow she did get a, a lawyer to put a new deed with one lot, but it never got split. So, when she came down, the gentleman who was, that said, you got a bigger problem, because you just put a deed in somebody's name.
Right, yeah, merge all of them, understood, yeah.
It's like I sold off my backyard, I've got a merged lot, too.
Yep.
I can't just sell my merged lot off, which is what happened here.
We understand, right, we understand.
That's why nine looks separate, but it's not separate.
We know, thank you. So, if you do allow the matter to be tabled, it should be conditional upon receipt of a time extension, or if you wanna, if you wanna write one up now, Arthur, I'll give it to you before you leave. I, I actually have a form, I can get it into Nina. No, I said, if you wanna handwrite one now, I can give it to her, either, either way, if you don't, if you wanted us to get a reform in tomorrow, that's fine. I like, I like it to look good. You like things to look nice. I want it to look nice. So, the table, conditional upon receipt of that time tag, because this was a tabled matter, for some reason, if we don't meet next month, it would automatically be approved, so you don't want that to happen.
So, I would, uh, make that motion, as requested in the table, um, with, um, time restriction, unlimited.
Time extension, not, not unlimited, but sixty days.
No, no, limited, but, no, no.
Yeah, no.
It's a sixty day time extension, just to meet statutory requirements.
I'll, I'll extend it into June. Okay.
Just in case.
Yes, just in case.
The way this winter is going, we have a snowstorm, so. We have a motion and a second. Okay, very good, on the motion, Ricky Sahadi?
Yes.
Dan De Pair?
Yes.
Jim's, James Colkins, John Frank?
Yes.
Chairman Prairie, yes, okay, excellent.
And I'll figure out that abutters list, sorry about that.
Thank you, folks, for coming out.
They all came to me, and they say, we never received, no matter how far you did, and I said, well, I'm, I'm the only one right on the side of that first house. But a hundred people across the street, down the road there, her and my, the other, that or that.
Okay.
We will re-notify for the next meeting.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much, folks.
Thank you also.
Thank you, council, don't go too far. Item number oh four, Antonio Costa, DBA attorney, Arthur D. Frank Jr., zero SS Napoleon Street, and zero North, uh, NS Edmund Street, um, I'm sorry, Emmanuel Street, map D sixteen, lots eighty-three and ninety-two, the applicant seeks a variance to construct a single family dwelling, waiving. The applicant seeks a variance to construct a single-family dwelling, waiving dimensional requirements, setbacks, frontage, and lot coverage in an R-eight single-family zoning district. This is another one of our continued items from last month, counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Arthur Frank, I'm a lawyer with an address of two oh-nine Bedford Street, Fall River, Massachusetts, and I represent Antonio Costa. There is also a co-applicant, Jason Flores, and I'll get to that in a minute as to why Mr. Flores' name is on this. Mr. Costa owns a parcel of land across a motherland that he owns, and it's, it's probably a true orphaned lot that was created by the city of Fall River. If you look at the original assessor's map, and I've highlighted where this parcel is, that's what the neighborhood used to look like. As you can see, everything was a grid, all the lots are approximately the same size as was the way lots were laid out. This is around your own subdivision. And if you look at what the city did, they, when they laid out Napoleon Street, they wiped out like ha- half of the lot. So, so what Mr. Costa had, is left with is this triangle, and Mr. Flores owns what would, what would be, the point of the triangle. So what, what we now have is what is basically looks like a, a, a right-angle triangle. It's an orphan lot, it's, I think it's the only vacant lot left in the, in the neighborhood. If somebody wants to correct me, I'll stand corrected. We want to put the lot to use, it currently has no use. The proposal is to build a, a single-family home, twenty-nine by twenty-eight. We can meet, um, the minimum, minimum, um, uh, frontage, uh, area, the required is eighty, we've got a hundred and thirteen point six. We're shy on, on front yard, side yard, and obviously on area and building coverage. But it seems to me where the city, in its wisdom, decides to change a location that probably was there for a hundred years, um, the city would hopefully try to help a homeowner or a landowner, um, put the, the land that's left over back to good use. And we can't think of anything else we can do with this parcel. It, it, it's small, it's, it's forty-six, four thousand six hundred, forty-six square feet, but, uh, there's really no other use for this parcel. If the original layout was still there, um, I think we'd have obviously a cleaner-looking lot, but this is what we're left with, and we ask the board's indulgence, uh, to allow us to do something with this lot.
Okay, it's an interesting one. I hadn't seen that original layout, that's funny. It's, um, unique. Um, haven't we had something on this previously?
Adjacent to it, the number of lots.
Ah, yeah.
Running up along Napoleon Street.
Yep.
There were a series of lots, and, um, those involve street discontinuances for us, because all of these streets used to go through. So my, my, my question almost would be, I don't know what the status is of Ed, Edmund Street, um, as it's adjacent to this. My guess is it's not constructed, for sure.
That would be my.
So there may actually be some, some rights to the centerline of the way of Edmund Street with this parcel as well, but that would only be an extra. I think the board can.
Yeah.
Look at the petition they have and, and move on that. Clearly a odd shape, pre-existing, non-conforming.
So counsel, tell me about the Jason Flores tiny little point where he wants to put a gas station on it.
That, that, that little point, I think is what's left from some land that was taken from the Flores family when they laid out that Napoleon Street layout. And, uh, my client has an agreement to buy it to add to the, um, to the, the main locus, so that kind of just squares off the point of that triangle.
I think it's the backside of the parcel that's directly across the street, D sixteen eighty-two.
It, it, it could be.
And when they put Napoleon in, they, they bisected the lots.
That makes sense.
And when, when they transferred the lots on the north side, they just left the D ninety, sixteen ninety-two just floating.
Okay, but that is, it, it is a separate lot, there is a description for it, it's, it's under a PNS right now, correct?
Correct.
Or at least a.
Yeah, and I, I did get Mr., Mr. Flores, um, signed off on this, and we do have that under agreement. Um, you see, yeah, Mr. Flores' name is on the, is on the application. Matter of fact, I talked to him today, and, uh, wanted just to know what, what was going to happen tonight, and I said it's up to the board. Uh, but we would hope that, um, the board would agree with us that if there were parcels like this in the city, we got to figure out what to do with them, uh, rather than just let them lie fallow.
It's important for the board to understand that, that the petitioner is not asking to create this lot.
Right.
This is a pre-existing, non-conforming parcel that, that serves no purpose, um, both for zoning as well as tax base, creation of, of new housing stock, so.
So the.
It does have value.
The other undeveloped section of that lot, not section of that lot, to the south of that lot is the layout for Edmund Street?
Correct. Not constructed, but that's what my question is, as Edmund Street on paper extends to William Canning Boulevard.
Right.
The applicant, depending upon the status of it, um, they may technically own to the centerline of it. But don't even contemplate that for now.
Nope. That's a bonus if they find out later on. Questions from the board? In the audience this evening, is there anyone to speak in favor of this petition? Is there anyone to speak in opposition? They're hearing none, it comes back to the board.
Before you decide to vote, again, specific to the house shown, specific to the proposed building setbacks, lot coverage, everything that's listed in the, in the table.
Site plan review.
Yeah.
Site plan review, yeah. It's cute. What say we, Osage men of zoning?
Mr. Chairman, I would make the motion to approve the variance as requested, um, with the site plan review, which is understood anyway, with the exact dimensions as laid out in the proposal.
Give a second on that.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, is there discussion on the motion? They're hearing none, on the motion. Ricky Sahadi?
Yes.
Dan DePere?
No.
James Cawkins?
Yes.
John Frank?
No.
Chairman Prairie, yes, unfortunately. Now, if I could ask something, Attorney Frank and Rod Manoman has item number eight on the agenda tonight. If the other applicants would not mind letting that come up to the top so that, um, they can, they can move on. So I would ask then, that's, uh, we're asking, Mark, you'd be still next up after that.
That's okay, I, I got three.
Okay.
I don't mind waiting.
Timothy Pinto?
Officer Frank.
Marlene Abad, Simpson Lane Realty, that's also you, Mark.
Oh, five also, Mr. Chairman.
Paula Forrest is the one you're covering.
Oh, five also.
Hmm?
Oh, five also. Oh, five.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Limbly Construction. Thomas, where are you?
I'm right there.
Okay. You're not in Somerset, so why the heck, just not stay around a couple minutes longer. All right, in that case, going out of order, let us go to item number eight, which is Rod Manoman LLC, Care of Attorney Arthur D. Frank Jr., uh, fifteen Star Street, map C dash ninety-four, lots thirty-six, thirty-seven, and thirty-eight. The applicant seeks a variance to divide the existing parcels into three lots, leaving the existing dwelling on one, um, lot and creating two buildable, single-family house lots, waiving lot area setbacks, frontage requirements, and an R-eight, single-family zoning district, counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Arthur Frank, I'm a lawyer with an address of two oh-nine Bedford Street, Fall River, Massachusetts, my client is Rod Manoman. And we come to the board tonight basically on the request of Mr. Hathaway. I'm giving the chairman a copy of a, a letter that I previously gave Mr. Hathaway, uh, finalizing the, the history of this property. Uh, I was before this board, I guess it was twenty years ago, and the board granted a variance to do what we're asking for tonight. In keeping with what Joe Bisco, the then-building inspector, used to tell us, uh, his, his theory of exercising a variance was, record the variance, get a Form A plan stamped and signed, record the plan, and then deed the lots. And we did all that. The client, at the time, just, for whatever reason, didn't start building. So I, I, I brought this to Mr. Hathaway's attention, and he agreed, yes, that's exactly what they used to tell us, uh, when we got this type of relief. That was at proper exercise of a variance. And since that time, I believe there have been many court decisions in Massachusetts that have even expanded, uh, what an exercise of a variance is, to the extent now that if you even forget to record your variance, but you act under it, it's considered an exercise of the variance. But Mr. Hathaway felt that he wanted to err on the side of caution, uh, and he felt that, go back before the board, um, he didn't have any problems, uh, with the project, but he just felt that, um, because of the amount of time that had elapsed, um, he didn't want to make a decision one way or another if, if the variance had in fact been exercised. I think it has, um, but I'm here before the board because Mr. Hathaway felt that this was a better course of action to let this board take another look at this. If you look at the, the map, you can see that the, uh, there's a structure that's right in the middle of this tract of land, and chapter ten of forty A tells us that that can be a hardship, the location of structures on the land can be a hardship. We can't move that house to, to do anything else with the land. So if, if that house stays in the middle, there's land on either side, uh, I'm asking the board to grant the same relief that the board gave me twenty years ago. If you have any questions, I'm more than happy to try to answer them.
How is it entreated by the assessors?
Three seconds.
So they're treating it as if it has been divided?
They did.
Yeah. When the first subdivision went through, and I didn't look, I didn't go look through it, and you say the subdivision went through and they deeded out the lots, did they deed them to separate entities at that point?
At that, what we did was, if I remember, we put, I think, the un, the unbilled, the unbilled lots.
The outside two into one entity.
Yeah, into, into, into a trust.
Yep.
And then we had the main house in one lot. That gentleman moved back to Portugal, and he just sold everything to one individual.
So maybe that's what.
Yeah, I mean, I can.
That when it came back into the same entity, maybe.
I, I can, I can understand Mr. Hathaway's, you know, uneasiness. Um, he did, although he did say, you're right, when Mr. Bisco sat in that seat on the fifth floor.
Yeah.
He would tell us, you do these three things, I'm okay, you've exercised the variance. Um, and I don't have a problem coming back before this board, I think it's still a good project. The current gentleman that owns it wants to build some houses. Uh, right now, the land is underused, uh, I think this is a candidate for, for relief from this board.
If, if that relief is needed.
Well, the building inspector, they, he did not appeal Glenn's decision, so this is a new petition.
Yeah.
Forget what, you know, you can keep in the back of your mind what's happened in the past, but the zoning enforcement officer determined.
Right.
New relief is needed.
I know, I disagree with him, but it doesn't matter.
That's not, but it's not our job, but this is not my job either, so it's, there's one zoning enforcement officer.
Questions from the board?
How does this letter read?
It's lengthy.
Oh, uh, well, no. It's just.
Sorry.
Yeah.
No, this is, this is recounting, um, this is going back to, was, from Attorney Frank to Glenn Hathaway.
Oh, oh, it's.
It was just a history lesson.
I thought it was, uh.
No.
Glenn's reaction, or reaction.
What happened was, the.
I don't have that.
The, the owner went down to, to get building permits, and Mr. Hathaway contacted me, he wanted the history of what I had done twenty years ago, and I gave him copies.
So that's pretty.
And, and he, he agreed, that's exactly what we were told to do, that that was considered an exercise of a variance by the then-building inspector. Of course, there's, there's plenty of case law that says current building inspectors are not bound by their predecessors, I fully understand that, and I think Mr. Hathaway just felt, let this board take a look at it, it's a different board, it's a different
So, please enumerate then the dimensional relief that you're looking for on these, on
It's an R-eight district, uh, the minimum lot area is eight thousand square feet, lot A has five thousand four hundred nineteen square feet, uh, the minimum, uh, front yard is twenty, um, we do, we do meet the minimum front yard. The, the side yard, yards are only twelve feet each, um, the rear yard we can meet.
Right, on lot C, you've got a five.
Yeah, lot, lot, lot C is a little closer to the, to Bates Street, it's only five feet.
I think the five feet was what was allowed on the original variance.
I think you're right, Mr. Thank you.
The only question I would have is, I don't, I, I see on the plan that relief is requested for lot area.
Yes.
I mean, I'm sorry, lot coverage.
Right.
But I don't see that in denial paperwork or application. Um, the board can act on what's proposed, but then the only issue that that raises is there's no proposed lot coverage for lot B, which I'm guessing is probably not going to meet the twenty-five percent, either.
Yeah, with the, with the house, parking, deck, garage, no, probably just not. It's a good point.
And could we vote that we find that the original is still in.
No.
No.
No. Because that's not requested of you.
Oh.
If Attorney Frank could have appealed Glenn's decision.
Yeah.
That Glenn said it's no good anymore.
We, we only had, this was an informal conversation.
Yeah.
I didn't ask him for, for, for denial.
Yeah.
Um, we just felt that that's what the building inspector wanted, he wanted me to come back.
Yeah.
You know, and that's what I agreed to do.
Well, that's it, I mean, his denial is, is a denial paperwork.
Yeah.
Be curious, the building layouts that are here, I take it, are different than they were during the original back in twenty oh-three?
Well, I, I think back then, I don't even know that we had, uh, any conceptual drawings of, of the houses.
I mean, the, the five feet for lot C, I think, is an issue for me. It's probably an issue to the person who lives next door, too.
I mean, they could, I mean, lot C, they could change to 12 and 12, like, or, or some, some, some other dimension.
Something, yeah, more balanced.
Like, like lot A.
Correct. Yeah, we can't get the 12 and 12.
Well, because one house is proposed at 26, one's proposed at 28. That's why you can't get the 12 to 12.
Correct.
Again, if, if the board wants to make some suggestions of revising the plan, I'm, I'm open to it.
I don't think we need to re-advertise for the lot coverage, but the lot coverage for lot B
Should be shown, yep.
And then just accept it as, as the plan. And this is new business, so you don't have to get a time extension on this.
Yeah, with, with, if we can revise, I, I would suggest revising possibly the building footprint on lot C and the setbacks. I'm not quite sure why it was done this way with, with 15 and, and five.
Yeah, that was just some, that was a discussion between Mr. Sudo, I think, and his, and his engineer.
Okay.
But we can.
They can reopen that discussion, then. That's fine.
Yes.
Yeah, we've got a larger lot on the smaller, I mean, a larger house on the smaller lot.
Right. Yeah, so we could potentially improve that lot coverage area, too.
We could get up to
And and describe the, the lot coverage area on lot B. I think if we come back with that, we'll have a much better understanding of what we're doing. I'd feel a lot better about lot C. That's my personal opinion. Anyone else on the board care to weigh in?
I don't know if you asked, audience, yeah?
We have not. That would be valuable. I just wanted to get the board wrapped up. From the, from the audience, is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this petition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Yes.
I'm in the far right hand side of 37 Star Street. I want to know where the people are going to park there.
So all, all three lots are providing the required amount of off-street parking, which are two spaces per residential unit. They, they're not charged with providing any more than what the zoning bylaw requires. So they're meeting that requirement.
As long as it's off.
Yeah.
It is.
Yeah, every, on their plan, it shows two spaces off-street for each house.
That street
Yeah.
is horrendous. It's barely got enough room for two cars to go down. When Liberal Club has something going on, everything is blocked off.
But
I can't even get.
Right, but the, so if you're having issues with Liberal Club,
No.
then we'll deal with Liberal Club separate.
But they're not going to be able to go the other way.
Who won't be able to go the other way?
Whoever buys those lots.
Well, they're not going to be able to park in front of their driveway.
Right.
Yeah, but the police block off all the streets.
Okay, but if they're, but there's somebody living in that house now. Are they able to get to their house now when, when the Liberal Club has an event? Or is that, are the street blocked off?
They, they blocked Bates Street up near Tower.
Not Bates, Star. So
They blocked Star.
the person that lives there now, so they block the street off and that person can't get to their house on Star Street? I don't think they can.
I'm in trouble, and I'm on a corner lot.
Well, trouble is one thing. It might be difficult, but they can't close the street and not provide access to people. But that's separate from the zoning board of appeals. So if, if that is actually happening, we can take that up with the licensing board and with the building inspector and the police department to ensure that access is provided, not only for the people, but for emergency apparatus to get to these homes if they need to. So it's a separate issue from, from the zoning board of appeals. But to your first question, they have to provide the required amount of off-street parking, which they have proposed.
Anyone else speak in opposition? We're hearing none.
Be requesting a continuance.
Very good. Do we have a motion on?
I think I can be back.
One month should be fine.
Yeah, I'll be back, man. Yeah.
May 16.
And I think, and I think Mr. Aggie agrees with me. I don't think we're up against the, the 100-day time limit.
You're not. Do we have a second on Jim Cawkins'?
Second.
Second. On the motion, then, John Frank?
Yes.
Jim Cawkins?
Yes.
Dan DePere?
Yes.
Ricky Sahadi?
Yes.
And Chairman Perea, yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for the courtesy of taking me out of order.
I love being out of order, counsel. That being the case, let's get back to where we were. Item number 05, Linwood Construction LLC, care of attorney Thomas P. Calorin. Zero County Street, map K06, lot 18, the applicant seeks a variance to construct a single-family dwelling waiving lot area, lot coverage, frontage, and setback requirements in an A2 apartment zoning district. This is our last continued item.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Attorney Thomas Calorin, representing the applicant Hyde, actually, strike that, excuse me, Linwood Construction LLC. The property before you has an address of Zero County Street. This actual, this, this property did come before this board. I think most of the members, if not all of you, were on the board at that time, a little over two years ago, so we're outside of that two-year window under 4816. This property has a, a bit of a history to it. There was a, it appeared to be on one large piece of land with about six different dwellings on it, and in about 1972, the property was carved up. There was a Form A plan that was recorded. Where again, I think we were dealing with six structures at that time. I don't know if the board has that as part of their records, but I can certainly submit that to you. One of the lots that was left is the lot that's before this board today, again, as being 3,150 square feet. And at that time, the property had a multifamily dwelling on it. It's difficult to tell from the records. I think my surveyor labeled it as a three-family dwelling. I've seen other records that refer to it as a four or five-family dwelling. Nevertheless, you're certainly dealing with a multifamily dwelling that was on the property. And the structure itself that existed pretty much took up the entirety of the property. You can see below the proposed 30 by 32 single-family dwelling that's shown on the plan, there's the kind of shadowed area, and, and there's a, a notation with some arrows showing the record location of former three-family dwelling. And as you can see, it, it really comes out near to the limits of the property. I would say the setbacks in some locations are well under five feet, based upon the 10-foot setback lines that are shown on the plan in front of you. What we're coming before the board is asking for a variance. Again, we need a variance for frontage, lot coverage, lot size, as well as setbacks. But again, we're dealing with a lot that previously had a multifamily dwelling on it. I understand that we're dealing with a, certainly an undersized parcel of land, but it was one that was used for multifamily purposes. And what this applicant is seeking is for this to be used for a single-family dwelling. I know one of the concerns that this board has, and, and oftentimes neighbors have, is whether or not we can provide the adequate off-street parking. And as you can see on this plan, there's a proposed 18-feet-by-20-feet asphalt driveway that can certainly accommodate two vehicles, which certainly complies with this board's zoning bylaws. So again, I think we're dealing with a very unique piece of land, a unique shape, with a unique history to it. Again, where we had an existing dwelling, a multifamily dwelling, that pretty much took up the entirety of the property. What would be proposed would be a much smaller dwelling than what, than what was previously there and would be less impervious area. And if you take a look at the surrounding neighborhood on the plan, most of the lots in this area are these substandard lots and substantially substandard lots, most of which are under 5,000 square feet. There's one immediately to the west. That's 3,109 square feet, which is even smaller than the lot that's before the board today. If you go across the street, you're dealing with a lot that's 6,000 square feet, 3,600 square feet, 3,459. So again, what's being proposed is not out of the character for this neighborhood. And further, again, if you take a look at the plan that's before you, just about every use that abuts or is in near proximity to this property is a multifamily dwelling, I'd say with the exception of the house lot that's diagonally across the intersection of Rock Cliff and, and County Street, which is another single-family dwelling. But other than that, you're dealing with three-family dwelling, two-family dwelling, a lot across the street that looks like it has two multifamily dwellings on one house lot. So again, what, what we're asking for in terms of a use, in terms of at least the size of the lot is consistent with the neighborhood, but the intensity of the use is significantly less than what you find on the neighboring properties. Again, I know this was a, a petition that came before this board a little over two years ago, but we would suggest to the board that one of the, one of the first things that's mentioned in the, in the purpose of the forward of zoning bylaws is to encourage the appropriate use of land. And this land has been sitting here vacant now for a little over 20 years, and would suggest that the construction of a single-family dwelling in this neighborhood would be the appropriate use of this land. And again, I don't think that it would, would create a situation where you're dealing with overcrowding due to the, due to the fact that we have got the off-street parking spaces. And I also think it enhances and conserves the value of, not only of this property, but the surrounding properties by putting a new, again, single-family structure on this otherwise unoccupied, unused lot that really can't be used for any other purposes. And with that, I'll, I'll yield to the board and be happy to answer any questions.
Just taking a quick look back at the previous decision, which I, I actually made the motion.
To approve, or did I?
I believe the motion was to approve.
To approve.
And I believe, I watched the, I watched.
One down, three to two.
No, but I, I didn't think it was you, Mr. Pereira, that, that made the motion, if I remember correctly. I, I watched the meeting today, and I, I, I thought it was another member, but I could be mistaken.
I look very different back then.
I mean, I know one thing that's different from the, from the last petition, and I, and I did watch it as well, and, and it was, it was an excellent presentation by Attorney Levin. Probably the best I've ever seen any stuff, so it was, it was very well done. But my, my question is, on the ANR plan, because this is the only one of the major differences, the size of the house and maybe some parking, but it, it shows the location of what the old dwelling was?
It does.
It does. All right, so, so the board can at least see and not just take a, a representation of what, where the building was. You can see why the lot was carved out and the number of houses that were devised at the time and the reasoning for the shapes of the existing lots in the neighborhood and the sizes of them. And then also the, I think the existing landowner has owned this for a while, right? Back to the, back to 88? Isn't that like the most recent sale?
I believe so. I'll, I'll double check, but I believe that's the case.
And something for the board also to consider is that when the city assesses these, these parcels, they assess them as buildable parcels. So the landowner's been paying taxes on this as a buildable lot, valued at whatever, $75,000 now, but for a number of years. And when, when it's deemed that they're not able to build on and not to be utilized, there could be a potential request for an abatement and that the property value and taxes received by the city are greatly diminished, not only for this, for this application, but also for the previous, you know, exist, pre-existing non-conforming lot.
And just
And then lastly, which also comes up a little bit later on in the night, this applicant, at the time of the fire, when, when this building, I forget what year it was, but within a two-year period of time, they could build back that exact structure with the same number of units. They just, whether financially couldn't do it at the time, or whatever the reasoning was. And we'll bring that back up again tonight with another petition on Irving Street, which does fall within that timeframe zone.
And just, just to, to answer, I think, Mr. Aggie, I was questioning, yes, the, the current owner has owned it since 1988.
Okay. Members of the board, questions on this? I would say I would characterize this as being consistent with the neighborhood as far as coverage, as far as, you know, size of building, et cetera. Where it is inconsistent, it's a single family, and a lot of multifamilies around it. Immediately next door is a three-family dwelling. You know, three family across the street, two family across the street, and it, it continues on that way. Six family to the rear of, on a very large piece of property, but six family nonetheless. And then we get into the change in zone and, and other uses, office uses, et cetera. So if there is an appetite in the market for a single-family house in a multifamily neighborhood, there it is. Any questions before we go to the public? You can think on it. You get another bite at the apple. To the audience, is there anyone here who would wish to speak on, in favor or in support of this application? Is there anyone here that would wish to speak in opposition to the application? We do have one piece of correspondence in opposition. Came to our office via email. Hello, my name is Eric Sarusi. I'm the owner of 129 County Street in Fall River. I'm emailing this as a complaint against a proposed dwelling located next to my lot. The property would be too close to mine, and I would worry about privacy as well as safety for my tenants. It is not a good idea, fire-wise, to have a dwelling so close. In addition, the intersection is very dangerous and the parking is limited. Any additional residences that the, any additional residences in that area would also cause that to be even worse. I'm aware that the land was attempting to be sold, and the prospective buyer feels confident he can get this passed. Why bother to come if you don't think you can get it done? This is insulting, since this has been attempted in the past and is denied over and over again, and unable to define the meeting, do, attend the meeting due to having to work, but I hope that this is expressed, that it is thus expressed. And is, is indeed the owner of the property immediately abutting at 129 County Street, which is a three-family dwelling? Would you care to
Certainly, Mr. Chairman.
address his, his concern of being too close?
So I think you, you raised two points, at least two substantive points. First one being the issue of, of parking, and again, what's being proposed complies with the zoning ordinance in terms of providing two off-street parking spaces. The other reindicates that the property is too close and could potentially create some sort of fire hazard. Where the dwelling is being proposed shows a 10-foot setback from the deck, and the deck being eight feet wide. So you've got an 18-foot setback from that mutual boundary line from the owner who wrote this, and I would suggest to the board that that is certainly significant enough setback. I think that the requirement in the district is, is 20 feet, so this is a, a two-foot difference from what is required in the zoning bylaw. And I, I would, again, based on the, based on the placement of the proposed structure, I don't think that that is a legitimate concern.
Right, and, you know, point out that his property looks like it's four, three, four feet off the, off the abutting property line.
Does it show on the Form A plan? Does it have a dimension from the building?
The Form A plan, I don't think shows a dimension, but, I mean, based on the scale on the plan that we've submitted, you know, you can see what, you can see what 10 feet is, and it certainly appears to be at least half, if not less.
Three feet.
Thank you.
I think it says it.
See, I said three or four feet.
Are you sure you want to say three?
Approximately three feet.
Can we get a second opinion? All right. So noted, part of the record. That was the only opposition we had come in to the members of the board. If there are no other questions or comments on the plan, how see you this?
I mean, look that we grant the variance as presented.
Specific house plan, no larger, house no lot, right, as presented, but on the, yeah, on the plan. Thank you.
Ricky, thank you. We have a motion in a second. Then on the motion, John Frank?
Yes.
Jim Cawkins?
Yes.
Dan DePere?
No.
Okay. Ricky Sahadi?
Yes.
And Chairman Pereira, yes.
Thank you very much. Good night, everyone.
Thank you. Congratulations, we've arrived at new business. We already have one, but it's new business, item number one, HQV Homes LLC, care of attorney Michael Levin, 150 Purge Street, map N08, lot 49. The applicant seeks a special permit to convert the pre-existing mixed-use commercial and residential building to five residential units waiving area lot coverage and setbacks in a BL, local business zoning district. in a BL, local business zoning district council.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, again, professionals, and Madam Clerk, Attorney Mark L. Levin, one-three-eight Rock Street, four of Massachusetts. I'm here representing the applicant, who's the owner of the property at one fifty Purchase Street. I look out my rear window from my office and see it every morning. That property I knew very well because that used to be owned by friends and a client, Paul Giroux, Frank Feitelberg, and later their family, and they had, on the first floor, the insurance company, and the second floor, the real estate office, and they had, I thought at that point in time, two apartments on the third floor. Over the years, this property got changed, handed over by different businesses. Ultimately, it was a multi-unit where it had the commercial on the first two floors, and apparently, my clientele tells me, it was one apartment on the third floor at the time he purchased it. The property was part of a larger parcel that got subdivided, and this board approved it into separate lots. Garage went to the preservation commission that I understand. A new two-family house was built closer to the Pine Street area. The back lot was separated and sold to a third party, and this house remained. What was required back then, and was insightful for this board at that time, was that they required that this parking area be set forth on a plan and part of the site plan review when they built the other property. In fact, they had that on the plans that were provided. And then when this property was sold, this property was deeded lots, parking spaces on the abutting properties. In fact, this client, because he put these tandem, figuring there's only going to be five units, and the people that are going to live there could have tandem parking spaces, actually have a total of eleven parking spaces to use. So he's asking that he be able to convert this to a five-unit building, two on each floor and the top one where it is. As you look at this area, it's not just in a BL district, it's also in the two overlay districts. It's in the housing district, in the AOD district, which allows four-to-six-family homes in this area. So this is not unusual to have a five-unit building where you can have four-to-six units. Now, we're not asking to do any exterior structural part of the property. It's deemed to be a more conforming use based on the fact that it was a variance before, but the use was such that it was commercial and residential. Now, the applicant wants to turn this over completely pursuant to Section eighty-six forty, four-twenty-five, with a special permit to convert its use to an equally appropriate use that is actually conforming to most of that area. Most of that area is now residential, there's only a few mixed uses in that area. So this will be bringing it to more residential, and again, the overlay districts are for residential purposes. So the real question is, we have a building sitting on this lot, its uses are pre-existing, we now want to convert it to something that is more useful and within the building and within the footprint, and allows it to be able to be reconstructed completely, putting new energy-efficient equipment, putting fire equipment, getting rid of the lead paint that is in this building, and bringing it up to code. Under the statute, under special permits, we have case law, and I believe I submitted that with my permit for the application, you know, this makes it economically feasible to do the project by allowing this expansion within the building to be conforming. Now, again, this will eliminate a pre-existing commercial area unit, which has largely in this area, based on the overlay that was provided for by the city a few years ago, wanting and looking to convert property for residential property. The rehabilitation will allow this structure to be preserved. It's an older building, it's been around, well, older than me, and has, now will allow upscale apartments to be placed in there and allow the values of that property and the values of the properties around it to exist and increase because eliminate a commercial area where you won't have as much traffic that would come to that property. Yes, they did park a lot on the property itself, but they parked on Purchase Street. Now we're going to have parking, essentially off-parking for all the cars, there won't be a lot of travel onto that property, other than the residents, other than they may have guests from time. I mean, the primary purpose of the residential zone is to preserve the homogeneity of this multifamily residential neighborhood. I think, and my client's application believes, through the statutes and the case law, and I'm going to recite them all for you, that this becomes a more conforming use for this neighborhood, and based on the overlays that were allowed in this, found in the city, place those overlays, this falls right within that picture.
I will agree with you on many things you just said, but I am looking at this plan, I'm looking at this plan, and I am confounded by these parking spaces. I've got tandem spaces with a concrete wall in between them. I don't know if these are theoretical spaces, or if these are designed spaces, but, and help.
There was park there, they used to come up the driveway and park in the back, that's where the Giroux's parked their cars, in those back.
With the parking on the left.
On the left.
No, we're showing proposed new driveway and a proposed new curb cut, there's no parking there now.
Well, that's what was designed.
Provides spaces two, three, four, and five.
Yeah, that was designed before with the last variance and approved.
No.
Because that's the plan that was submitted.
On the left of the five-unit building, where it's sidewalk and lawn right now. There are two spaces for the two-family building in the back, but you're proposing a new driveway and a new curb opening, adding spaces two, three, four, and five. Those do not exist and were not in the original.
Oh, okay, I see what you're talking about now, sorry.
I'm sorry.
I'm looking at the wrong plane.
Sorry to interrupt.
In my reading, parking space by definition of off-street, the last line, it says and regulated that no maneuvering incidental parking shall be on any public or private street or walk, and so that any automobile may be parked or unparked without moving another. So those don't qualify, do they?
So, right now, the parking proposed on this plan does not comply to the zoning bylaw.
Yeah.
And no request for variance or waiver of the existing parking regulations was requested. And we alerted Attorney Levin to this at the beginning. So parking is an issue. Let's also look at space number six, which straddles the access easement line that gives everyone else room to get to the parking that was laid out first. So I think the parking that's proposed, I think the use is fantastic, the five-unit residential use, if it's the appropriate number of bedrooms, but this parking is illusory, one hundred percent. And so relief either needs to be requested for parking, or a new parking layout provided. In the arts overlay district, parking can be provided in a number of ways, on the property, off-site, or reserved in other locations in the vicinity through lease. So I think, again, I don't vote, but an issue of parking needs to be resolved and addressed.
Yeah, I'm, you know, honestly, counsel, I'm not, I have no confidence of this parking layout.
Okay, well, I mean, like I said, it does have the four spaces on the abutting land that belongs to them, that was by deed, and I provide that deed. If, you know, if the board feels it's more appropriate for me to have the engineer redesign it, maybe eliminate, unfortunately, a couple parking spaces, and then come for a, ask for relief for that, too.
So eight, nine, ten, and eleven are deeded to this property?
I just couldn't get the right ones, yes.
Okay. All right, there's four. But the rest of this, I mean...
And you're eliminating two on-street parking spaces to create the driveway, right? At least.
That was the only one.
At least one.
One.
Probably two.
Yeah. I mean, parking spa, not to be sarcastic, parking space number one is the only one I have any confidence in. That's good. Now we're up to, now we're up to five.
Well, they were trying to not ask for...
You can't open your door if you're in the passenger seat, so I don't know.
They were trying not to ask for waivers of parking, they were trying to provide you with parking, and that's how the engineer came up with it. You know, I didn't design the plan, so...
No, 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 I know.
I don't fit the definition.
But you're the guy that gets to represent it.
But if that is something that you believe I should...
I want something more, I would want to see something more than conjectural parking spaces, and that's what I feel we have, and I think as, Mr. Aguirre and I discussed, there is that, there is that spaces laid over on an easement.
Yeah, you at least have to address that space, because you can't impede anyone else's rights to that easement. So let's start with that one, so we're going to cross that one out, which I think you had, you thought, you said you had eleven proposed, so.
You're talking about six?
You can easily get rid of six, and now you've still got two to one. But again, I think if you look at the arts overlay district and the reasoning behind creating that district, it was to give landowners flexibility with providing and accommodating for parking, doesn't have to be on this site.
Right, so with that flexibility, if you're coming in with a copy of the deed right that says you have these four parking spaces on an adjacent property, you know, that's covered, if you come in with a lease that says you've leased X amount of parking spaces for a long period of time on another lot someplace else, come up with a way to prove to us you mean it.
Well, mine's a deed.
I think the idea is awesome, it's a great building, this is a perfect use for it. This...
Well, attached to your pro...
Little jujitsu.
Attached to your package is the deed that gave the parking spaces.
Deed of the parking share.
That's Book one-one, three-oh-six, page three-twenty. I did provide that, so you would see that.
Cool, I stand, I stand.
No, no, I just didn't, why you think I didn't try to do my homework?
I never don't, you counsel.
Well, what is the best method for this board for me to have the plan revised and then request the waiver of...
Depending upon how you can address it, let's look at arts overlay. How many bedrooms are you proposing?
I think there were two in each.
So two bedrooms?
That's what I recall, but I didn't write it down, unfortunately, I looked at it earlier.
Maybe I'll read that answer, too, for the next... Yeah, well, that's why I asked.
Oh, actually, it's going to, yeah. Three-one bedrooms.
So you've already asked for a special permit for the arts overlay district?
Two bedrooms, that's what he said.
Three ones and two twos?
Yes.
That's even better. For the arts overlay district, you have asked for a special permit. Now, eighty-six, three-seventy-six E, off-street parking may be provided through one or a combination of the following: onsite, but not limited between the street and the front of the building, which I think you're okay on that one; off-site by contract in public or private off-street parking facilities. So those are your options. So you can provide ten parking spaces utilizing a combination of those two. Now, if you can't provide ten, then you'll need a waiver of parking.
Correct.
To reduce the required number of spaces. So that would require a new petition, or re-advertising at least, but if you can go find private, public or private off-street parking facilities, then you don't need to re-advertise or reapply.
Well, I understand, I'd have to talk to my client if any of these others are available, but, you know, again, if we're eliminating six and seven, if those are the ones I get to eliminate...
Well, no, I think seven, seven you're probably okay with, one you're okay with, and three and five you might be okay with, or two and four, but not all four of those. So you may only need to find...
Two.
Two.
Yeah.
Or ask for a waiver.
Or ask for a waiver of parking, or even just, even ask for them that they could be stacked, rather than to reduce the numbers, but that would be up to you.
Hmm? On Street?
Yeah.
Is this the, this is the property that they, they had a problem with the tie-in because of the moratorium? That should be up by now, right?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Is that up by now?
They ended up going to the city council for permission to open, for the two-family building, yes, they did that.
But is that moratorium up yet?
No.
It's not, because they, are they asking for a curb cut?
Yeah, they want, well, they've applied for a curb cut, and it's been sitting for a few months to get through this process.
Right.
So a curb cut would require also, now granted, dealing with concrete sidewalk is a lot different than asphalt.
Yeah.
So the council does look more favorably upon creating a driveway, because you're not digging trenches or patching a street, the pavement part of it, so. But yes, that would be another level of permitting that they would need to get.
Right.
So the proposed sixteen-foot opening is not by right, they would need specific approval to do that.
Right.
And then we've got a sixteen-foot opening that also directs you halfway into parking space number one.
Right.
So what happens is, we often get the site plan review when we get things like this, and when you can't make it work, now that's three months down the road, and then now someone has to come back before you to now go seek their release. So now is the time to really deal with it, before you, before you deal with that, so everybody knows the variables moving forward.
Okay, well, I, you know, again, I have to talk to my client, and he knows his neighbors, or hopefully knows his neighbors now, to find out what parking availability is on the adjacent property.
It can be, I mean, you can rent from Five Cent Savings Bank across the street, you can rent from the Eagle Parking Lot, there are a number of parking lots in this area that if you could get contracted parking for a couple of spaces.
All right.
Again, I don't think anybody has a concern about the use of converting this to residential use, at least I didn't hear any, or at least not from the audience, we'll hear from the audience next, but...
Well, I guess the situation is such that I need to make sure I have my parking, or I need to ask for a waiver for parking.
Right, but for right now, the best...
Today.
My recommendation would be to, right now...
Withdraw.
No, no, no. Just table, because before the next meeting, if you can come up with...
Other parking spaces.
Providing ten some way, then we can act on it at the next meeting.
Okay.
If you find out before the next meeting you can't, then you'll have to file a different petition and re-advertise for a reduction in parking, or however you want to handle parking.
Okay, and I will ask for a continuance, so I can sit down with my client as engineer and find out with the neighbors what has the availability. I mean, his attempt was to make sure he had two parking spaces per unit, that's what he was trying.
Yeah, but it can't be, it can't be pretend, they have to...
You know, I...
They have to meet with zoning requirements.
Better than conjectural. Let me turn to the public at this moment, just in case there are any issues we have in the public before we kick it out. Is there anybody that wants to speak in favor of this petition? Anyone in opposition? Okay, whoop, one, two, three, four, eighteen. Whoever wants to start?
I can speak briefly, so it's okay. Good evening to the table board, my name is Jim Saul, I'm the president of the Preservation Society Fall River. I represent them in the bar behind the property. As an abbot to one fifty Purchase Street, the Preservation Society is expressing its opposition to the proposed special permit request to convert the pre-existing use of that one fifty Purchase Street into five residential units. As the property owner of one forty-eight Purchase, located behind one fifty Purchase Street in the Holmes Historic Carriage House, the Preservation Society has serious concerns regarding the increased density in the local business district. And we believe that proposed five units of one fifty Purchase Street, rather than the allowed three units, would provide too heavy a burden on the neighborhood, which already suffers from high density and traffic. The zoning board previously rejected a proposal to construct a new three-family home directly abutting that property, just in two thousand twenty, for similar concerns of density. The Preservation Society is already required to provide parking on its own land for one fifty Purchase Street at no cost, and does not believe the neighborhood could handle any influx of any more motor vehicles for additional two units at the site. With inadequate parking to handle the current number of allowed units zoned with the property already, we believe it would be extremely detrimental to increase the density at this site even further. And I have to say vehemently that the drawing is illusory, it is not appropriate. to increase the density at this site even further. And I have to say vehemently that, that the drawing is a loser. It is not appropriate.
Okay, anyone else? Do you wish to speak individually, or is this?
Hello, Alexander Silva, one forty-eight Purchase Street, also a board member of the Preservation Society, and I'm actually the volunteer landlord on site at one forty-eight Purchase Street, so I'm very familiar with the property. Um, when this, uh, I guess when we saw this, I was confused at the five suggested units, since this property already did not meet the required parking requirements. As Jim already stated, we're required to provide at least one of the spots on our own land, and the drawing parking space number nine, half of the spot is in our easement for the garage, which is in use with our trash receptacle, so that is also not a valid parking spot, in my opinion. Additionally, the two spots in front of the carriage house and between the two properties, once those vehicles are there, there is absolutely no access for those two to four spots in that corner, which half are on different grade, which is the wall that they actually construct. They actually constructed a wall further into the parking spot, I believe. Um, so I'm not quite sure how the two forward, I can't see the numbers, would even access that spot. Um, additionally, when this property was originally subdivided in twenty twenty-one, the ZBA made the subdivision contingent on the separation of utilities. It's our understanding that the one fifty Purchase Street has a separate meter for the electrical, but the power line still runs directly through the entire length and center of the wooden house. So I don't know if that was examined on the site plan review for one sixty Purchase Street. I was speaking with National Grid, and I don't think they've had any work requests in recent years, so I don't think that's been looked at. And just, you know, as it's zoned as is, not additional units, you know, per the zoning, so I'm relatively concerned about the capacity and safety of that. I would just recommend you to actually look at the property and try and figure out how this works. The two, six and seven spots that are blocking the easement, I mean, it kinda looks on paper like they could squeeze in there, but they have a dumpster in that prop, that spot currently right now, and there's already been two instances of Fall River ambulances refusing to go down the driveway in easement because they could not fit already. Um, and I will just say that one of the instances, it probably could have made a difference with the length of time it took for them to get to the patient in our property. Uh, so I just have serious concerns about this. Initially, on the north side of the carriage house, I think it's marked on this plan, but in previous plans that marked those parking spots, there is a stone wall that juts out of about two to, two and a half feet that is on this plan now, but it's in the parking spots. You could actually see the tail end of the, uh, street most side parking spot. It has the, the full length spot kinda ticking out over the wall, but the rest of it, the cars essentially will be in the easement. So it's not a, it's not a perfect parking layout, thanks.
Anyone else that covers, that covers the team?
December. Hi, hi, my name is Priscilla Torri, and I'm here regarding the property of thirty-four Franklin Street and the portion which used to be forty-six Franklin Street. I have, I think they've articulated all the concerns that I have, probably much more, much better than I could have. So I'm in agreement with what they have presented to you, the board. I am concerned about those things as well as the parking issues, which I wind up having to, um, have cars stay overnight and in the lot that don't belong to my property or don't rent in my property. So that's a, a pretty significant concern. And the number of tenants, if it were to become a five, I've been in that building many times. I grew up on thirty-four Franklin Street in nineteen forty-seven, so I've seen what goes on with parking and limited parking for many decades. And I just wanna support what Jim has brought forward to you, and I think that there are very good points that they made.
Very good. Thank you. Well thought out. Thank you.
So if I can, Mr. Jim?
Please.
So I think we all agree that the parking is an issue, and I think Attorney Levin's gonna go back and take a look at that. But something we, we need to take a look at is the number of units allowed in this district is not limited to three. That's in, that's in the underlying BL zoning district. It caps off at three. This falls in the Arts Overlay District, which is only limited by the unit count, by the amount of parking they can provide. So if, if Attorney Levin also goes back and says, okay, we can only provide eight real spaces, well then they can modify the position to have four units instead of five. So that zoning district specifically details limit of, of unit count based on being able to provide parking, and that's why they give you the different formula for being able to, to get to the, to the calculation. With the separation of utilities that this board puts on these types of subdivisions, those are utilities controlled by the city of Fall River, water and sewer, which I do believe did take place here. Um, providers, electric, gas, they handle their, they handle their own stuff. People don't call the city and say, hey, the guy in front of me won't let me fix my electric line. My, my answer has to be, we don't control electric lines. So the reason behind that stipulation in zoning was so that someone doesn't call and complain. I, my, my neighbor won't allow me to fix my water line that's on their property. So the purpose of that requirement is so that we don't have to deal with that. And, and it's just good practice. Also, when Attorney Levin, when you have your engineer look at, um, specifically spaces nine, ten and eleven, I don't care how they're painted on the ground today, they need to be presented in the same manner as they were when the variance was approved the first time, and also through site plan review. So if, if they somehow squeaked in an extra space by getting rid of, I don't even remember what the plan showed, a hatched-out trash area or something closer to the building. So ma- just make sure that the representation of what's shown on this plan is what was per approval.
Yeah, I, I'm just looking at the old plan that was part of the deed and-
Yeah, just, just make sure the surveyor addresses the comment of, let's make sure that nine, ten and eleven, or whatever parking is shown on this plan, is representative of what was approved previously.
Okay.
Because that's what you have rights to.
Right, I understand that.
That's all I have, please.
If it does need to be re-advertised, um, I have to send out the legal ad next Friday.
It won't be re-, it'll be a, a new petition.
Oh, it'll be a whole new petition, okay. Okay.
Yeah, I'm gonna table to figure out what the parking is. I mean, that obviously is the biggest issue. You don't seem to have a problem with it being changed from commercial to residential, where the overlay allows it. So it's really just to find out if we have true parking spaces, or does he have to get it somewhere else?
That's gonna drive the number of units.
And that'll drive the units. If there's eight, then there's four units if it's.
Mark, something that might help the board, when you, when you do a parking analysis, if you can't come up with the number that you need, do an analysis based upon square footage of what commercially this building would require for parking.
Sure.
That might be a number that can be discussed if you're looking for a waiver of parking. I don't, I don't know how, but the square footage of commercial tenant is in that building, but.
It was the two floors originally, yeah.
No, but, but the bylaws gonna tell you, you need X number of spaces for X amount of square foot of commercial space, so.
Is it Mayor Jim?
Motion to table.
Hmm? Pardon?
Mayor, Mayor Jim.
Mr. Chairman, you have a motion or a dissent?
Hold on.
No, it's table, table till May.
Table to May, yes. And you've made that motion?
Yes.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Then on the motion, John Frank?
Yes.
Jim Calkins?
Yes.
Dan DePere?
Yes.
Ricky Sahadi?
Yes.
Chairman Frere, yes.
Thank you. Thank you for your input. I appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman, two minutes, five minutes?
Five minutes. Five minutes, please. Can you just pipe in some cheesy music back there, Jack?
Nina, put music on your phone.
It's gonna be Taylor Swift.
I get some scorpions.
You have letters?
Oh, good, okay.
Okay, thank you.
That helps.
Thank you.
Thanks for your-
Actually, Dean, I have to burn down a lot of these.
Oh, you're doing Irving Street?
I'm doing Irving and I'm doing the, uh, the one up Barker favor.
Oh, yeah, that one burnt down a while ago, yeah.
Irving was just recent, but.
Well, that one you, you rented, I mean, if you wanted a build, I don't know why the one wouldn't just give you a building permit. Was it listed two years ago?
Yeah, it would, confused him. He said, you're going, you don't have a wall up. My people found another way to do it.
Yeah, and actually a reduction, reduction rate?
Yeah, in off-street parking, it didn't have a. They planned this stuff with that.
I don't, I don't, I don't understand that. I mean, if it's two years in a day, yeah, I can understand, but if you, you didn't have time on it. I mean, how can, how can you keep a wall up if it could be a hazard?
The Navy would take down everything.
The foundation's still there?
Yeah.
Foundation's a wall. I know, I know. Again, there's one zoning enforcement office, sorry, it's not me.
I own the property.
Okay.
I'd be able to rebuild with my family. I might have moved over a little bit, but one side was tight, and then it was bloody around. When I went back to speak to him about it, he said, no, you can't. He told me he never said that.
You know, sometimes there's a reason. So this is a veteran playing for everyone. But yeah, he was, how, how long did you wait to file a suit? Come here, then you're going.
Oh, yeah.
And beyond the timeframe anyway.
Mr. Tolman, how do college visits go?
Very good.
What was his favorite?
Uh, like St. John's.
Yeah?
A lot. Went UConn too, uh, too, on this campus, but it was nice, very nice. Didn't care before.
No?
In the Bronx, tou- tou- tough area. The, the campus itself was beautiful.
Yeah. Is it all housing off-campus there?
No.
No?
No, a lot.
I bought them so long, yeah.
Yeah, so.
What'd your wife like? That's the most important question.
It's not deep, most important.
Not to you, not to you, but to her.
You know, TV cameras are still running.
Yeah, she doesn't watch these.
Jeff, is that a shovel I hear over there?
I missed the merch drop. Yeah, it comes out at midnight.
Oh, it's tonight?
Yeah, but I missed the merch drop and it's all spilled out. I was here.
We should have taken a recess earlier than that.
No.
We should have requested it. We have a recess for merch drops.
I didn't, I didn't know it was gonna drop. I thought it was gonna drop tomorrow.
Why is it enough and enough?
Funny as hell, my grandson, when he was like, sure.
She just came up with it.
It might have been three, he was, he was talking, and his mother had taken him to something like Museum of Science, and they had merch. Everything has merch. Told us about the trip and he goes, they have cat merch. It's like, oh no, no, she started him way too young.
That's funny. I guess I'll get the TikTok knockoffs.
What?
Get the TikTok shop knockoffs.
They'll be out tomorrow, so. That's like, we got a buddy of mine who knows one of the people that does, uh, every Super Bowl, they create all the merch. So no matter who wins, there's shirts that say they won.
Right.
He has all the loser shirts. He has a, I've got a bunch of them. They're not supposed to let them go. They're supposed to be destroyed.
You can only wear them around the house, right?
They just get out.
To send third world countries, that's what they do.
Is that what they're doing?
I heard that.
Sell them for top dollar.
Cowboys, okay. No, they lost. All right, well, wait, time wise, you know.
I don't know. So it looks like there's gonna be more than twelve next meeting.
What do we have to work to two, two tables this week?
Plus the twelve.
Three tables, actually.
And then plus the twelve.
Plus the twelve. So now we're at fifteen.
Jeff, you get an item two for Timothy Pento?
No, just six and seven.
Oh, okay.
Looks like five minutes to me.
Yep. Instead of timing?
I don't know, two. Timothy Pento, one ninety-three, one ninety-seven, Oak Green, Oak Grove Ave. MAP L twelve, lot nineteen, the applicant seeks variance to change the pre-existing non-conforming auto repair shop use into auto sales in a G general zoning district. Identify yourself and give your pitch.
How you doing? I'm Timothy Pento. I, uh, own and operate SM Automotive LLC on one eighty-three Oak Grove Ave, which is owned by my father, Celestino Pinto. I'm just trying to operate in auto repair and auto sales on the same property, uh, which was done there prior. I guess they had lost the license to non-renewal, um, so therefore I'm here to seek a variance to just kinda do what was always been done there before.
Do you know when that, um-
I do have a copy.
When the prior lapsed?
I believe it was fourteen, twenty fourteen-ish.
I think it probably lapsed in two thousand twelve, when they requested new release-
Yeah.
-to go to auto repair and a roofing business.
That might have been what it was, it was twelve. I knew it was somewhere.
So it was granted in oh eight, then changed in twelve, so that's when that, the sales use would have been eliminated.
Before there was a vote, was that to approve at the time?
What was that?
The vote that was taken in twenty twelve, that was to approve?
Yeah, yeah, voted to approve.
Yeah, okay. And then not acted upon?
No, I, I, was it ever, did they ever operate the roof stuff, the roof company?
I, I couldn't tell you. We didn't own the property at that point in time.
Yeah. All right. So when, when had it been approved for auto sales?
Oh, eight.
Oh, eight. But this, this ended up changing the use?
Right, in twelve, yeah.
Talk to me about the property, because you're gonna have, you're gonna have an ongoing, not just the auto sales business, you're, you're also gonna have the other business ongoing, correct?
Yeah, the auto repair essentially will be the, is the, uh, the main business. The auto sales is just a supplement, um, you know. I'm in the auto business, so obviously buying and selling cars, fixing them gives me an advantage to make a little extra money, you know, um.
So, I mean, you, you got a kinda crazy grid of parking out there, and I realize that you have customer cars coming in, you can stack them up, you can, you know?
Yeah, so essentially, my, my parking lot is, uh, it's got a privacy fence, so in, in the aspect of a normal car dealership, like you drive by, see cars for sale, you're not gonna be able to see that from this property, because there's a privacy fence for the neighbors. You know, I, I took this into consideration figure, and most of my sales will probably be online-based anyway. So the surveyor kinda came up with a parking plan that went off the license that was granted back in oh eight for twenty vehicles. So he kinda figured out a way to stack the vehicles in a way to equal up the twenty that was given before. There is, you know, we could modify a little bit if need be. On Beauregard Street, there is a break in the curb, um, so the third spot, fourth spot, fifth and sixth would have their own separate access if I were to take the fence down and put a gate there, essentially.
Okay, is there a curb cut on Beauregard?
Yes.
And there is a curb cut on Oak Grove.
Yeah, the whole, almost the whole line of the Oak Grove, yeah.
That's, that's a wide open apron, so. That's, that's a wide open apron, so. I mean, to me, the, 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 the parking and the, the access is, is the major concern. So you're saying that if you have, if you do have cars for sale, let's say you have eight cars for sale here, they're gonna be stacked in someplace, maybe doubled in, because you've got tandem parking spaces. You'd have to shift them around, move them around.
Which, I mean, that's no different than what I do on a daily basis.
Right.
You know, a broken car gets pushed, then, you know, towed in, we gotta push it out of the way to, to get it out, it's kind of the nature of the beast.
Whether they're, whether they're twenty vehicles for repair or twenty vehicles for sale, it's the same maneuverability.
Right.
Correct.
If it's, you know, if it's a full lot, it's gonna be the same game.
On, on this plan, it, it doesn't show spaces for repair vehicles, it just says for sales vehicles.
So we kind of, it was gonna be both. I don't know how many, uh, sale spots I was gonna get.
When you go for a license, they may want to know.
Mm-hmm.
How many are gonna be for sale spaces and how many.
I mean, we could differ- differentiate them further if need be.
Yep.
The other thing that, that makes it a little bit confusing, especially coming in from the Oak Grove Ave side. Because that's, that's where your customers are entering from typically, correct? To, to drop off, et cetera. So you got two customer parking, I'm, I'm assuming they're, well, there's three, but two of them are right in, right in off the street.
There is a fence there.
Yeah, okay.
So you can't pull direct off the street, you'd have to pull into the parking lot.
They're gonna have to come in the gate, into the lot.
Yeah, got it, yeah.
But the aisle width of twenty-two feet is what's required. So the, the customer spaces and the employee space is what's required by, by ordinance.
Yeah.
So I don't.
Which nine out of ten, when they pull into my lot, they stop like in that loading area.
Yeah, they're gonna park there, but.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
How they actually use it, that's something else. We're, we're just dealing with the zoning aspect.
Yeah, we need to, we need to see them, which is, which is fine. If they decide to park in the loading area, then.
The four spaces to the east of Beauregard.
All the way at the top?
It looks like those fall off of the pavement?
So it is gravel over there. There, there's a gravel area. I think maybe a couple of feet of it is in gravel, but I could.
So you can't pave it, you understand that, because you, you can't pave it, because you haven't asked for increase in lot coverage, so it's gonna stay what it is.
What's that? Correct. Correct. But I figured being gravel like a store.
And they'll say as, as vehicles are already parking there, I'm sure their grandfather in some degree of continuing to park there.
There's quite a bit of that, it's gravel. Okay, I didn't realize that.
Yeah, the only non-gravel I have is like behind that little square next to Beauregard, there's like a little grass area.
Right.
But majority of the lots either paved or gravelled.
Dan, just a question clarifying, it would, if we prove, we, we don't have to prove the number of cars, it can be, so we just approve the.
That'll be licensed, you're, you're approving the number of spaces, yes.
From the availability of selling.
So, but when he goes to licensing, he'll only be able to get one license or the other, not totally more than, than the twenty.
Yeah.
But within the purview of this board, Dan, is that within our?
You could, but, but then you're gonna kind of handcuff him.
Yeah.
Unless he wants to tell you how many he wants of each. But if, but if, if licensing will give him that flexibility. Um, it, it really shouldn't, I, I don't see where it would make a difference for, for this board, whether it was a repair space or a for-sale space. Because the for-sale vehicles are probably being fixed as well, so they might, might fit both.
Yeah, so we're better.
A lot of times it's a matter of whether there's a plate on the car or not.
Yeah, we're kind of better to leave that alone, right?
Yeah, I would, I would, I would.
Okay. Yeah, I would leave him the flexibility on that.
It, it was just that on the plan, it said sale spaces. So if it's approved, sale and, and repair, not to exceed. One, two, three, four.
Twenty.
There's twenty, I believe.
Eight, nine, ten. Well, is it? One, two, three, four.
Sixty.
There it is, sixteen on employee, customer, twenty total.
Because you've got customer, customer and employee, so it's twenty minus four, so a total of sixteen for sale or repair.
Right, because that takes into account the, the required for customers and, um.
Parked on, on the lot.
Yeah.
Whatever the licensing board wants to give him for parking in the shop itself, that's separate.
Okay. All right, anybody in the, uh, anybody in the audience wish to speak in favor of the petition? Anybody wish to speak in opposition? I'm hearing none. It comes back to us, guys.
Make a motion to grant.
No conditions on that?
Site plan review and.
I don't think it needs site plan.
No.
Licensing, which is changing use.
Not building anything, yeah, it's just, you're not, the one thing if he was adding parking, not, not add parking.
Okay.
Parking. As presented.
Parking as presented on the plan.
Sounds good. Do we have a second on that, please? Second, then, uh, on the motion, Ricky Sahadi.
Yes.
Dan DePere.
Yes.
Jim Calkins. John Frank.
Yeah.
Chairman Ferrer, yes. You all set?
Thank you.
Granted. Item number three, Marlene Abad, uh, one fifty Baker Street. Map F ten, lot three. The applicant seeks a variance to build a four-family dwelling, waiving the number of units, lot area, lot frontage, lot coverage in an R four, two-family zoning district. The applicant also seeks a special permit waiving parking requirements. You didn't get on here, but.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board again, attorney Mark L eleven, one three eight Rock Street, four, Massachusetts. And, uh, thank you for the professionals, and I'm clerk. Uh, my client purchased this property with the intention to build. This property had been a multifamily unit that burned down a few years back. My client only knows scanty, uh, history about it, but there was between a four and a six-unit building there before the fire was destroyed. If you look in that neighborhood, that's basically consistent to most of the units there, twos, threes, fours, sixes, mixed commercial uses. I think there's only one single family in the entire area, but it's been always a multifamily neighborhood. Uh, and the zoning permits two families. Uh, I am told, eh, that back around two thousand fourteen or two thousand fifteen, the prior owner had obtained a variance, a four or four-unit building, uh, but never exercised that. And then when he came back, it was denied. Uh, it's been several years since that time, and my client proposes to utilize the property, and in fact, uh, provide most of the parking that's available. We're short two spaces. But this is a property that has sat there, uh, it's barren, uh, it, uh, calls for someone to use this property and make it utilization. That is in a multifamily neighborhood. She's proposing to put a two-story building, which there will be two floors only. Uh, the units will be, uh, two to three-unit, uh, uh, bedrooms. Uh, and we are asking for the waivers of the lot coverage and area in order to provide this plus the, uh, the usage. And the, uh, frontage of the lot is still small too, but we can't change anything with the frontages that we have. Uh, we are looking at the viability of putting this property back on the tax rolls. It will, uh, utilize, uh, the, most of the parking will be on the property, and in fact, from what I'm told, it's not a bad area for parking anyway. Uh, the maintenance of this property be taken care of. Uh, she intends to use one of the units for herself. Uh, we think the character is such that the size of this lot is not different than the other neighborhood lots that are out there. Uh, it affords some affordable housing, uh, it has some efficient use to provide some harmony with that neighborhood and conforming to the zoning. And we think that this will be a, a good position for a property that had housed a very large, uh, property, uh, in the past. And now bring it down to a more modern four-unit building. Thank you.
A lot of history here, looking back at, um, where this has been. It was approved for a single family in two thousand thirteen, two-family in two thousand fourteen. Uh, that was a four-family.
Four in fourteen.
Two thousand sixteen, it was back again. What is it, you do five, within a certain number of years, they're free? I can't remember.
Well, this is all before my client purchased the property.
Things got more history than Gettysburg. And then two thousand seventeen, what was approved?
Denied.
Denied.
It was denied for a four, for a four-unit at that time.
Yeah, that's when the prior owner didn't exercise, apparently from what I'm told, and then they denied it. But we're here for a new day and.
No, no, I know, I'm just trying to understand. I mean, it's an empty lot, and empty lots.
And I don't know what parking spaces were available before my client has used, uh, the most. In fact, she had intended to use it in the back, but Eugene had spoke to her when she went to the building department. He didn't like the idea of having parking in the back of the building, so they put most of it in the front and the two on the side.
So this is the fourth iteration of this plan that we've seen since submission date?
Third.
So how many parking spaces are being proposed?
Yeah, please.
Six.
Six, because there is a notation that has the other area being called out as another proposed for. See where, in the driveway, says.
Well, I mean, that's the proposed parking in the front.
I just want, I wanted to be clear of.
No, it's two there and the four in front.
Right, okay, yeah, four, no, but then, but they're numbered independently, so six spaces.
Yes. Again, trying to maximize the num- number of spaces that are available, so they're not asking for a lot of.
Well, maximizing the size of the building, what comes first, parking or the building?
Well, true.
Right.
Well.
Maximizing with what's left.
So, so the two to the north are tandem?
Yes.
They're all, well.
They're all tandem.
Three sets of tandem.
Three sets of tandem, yeah.
But they have technically requested a special permit for reduced parking. So I would say that that allows you to act on stacking, as Mr. Calkins presented earlier.
At least you're not the guy.
The general term of special permit for reduced parking, I, I would say would cover you to allow that to happen.
I know, and I know we're restricted to use, but common sense is you start stacking parking spaces, you're gonna have a problem at some point, so. So we have six, realistically. Six spaces?
Yes. And the idea of putting them in the back, Gene didn't like the idea of having the driveway going around the back and people having to back up.
Yeah, it's not gonna make any more parking for it.
Right.
That's not.
And moving the house front to put park in the back, then pushed everything out front.
I mean, let's see if, if we have any audience members that have complaints about parking on the street as it exists now.
Yeah, why not?
The, well, one thing I'll offer is that the proposed new driveway and curb opening will be offset by the closing of the existing curb opening, which is on the southern side of the property. So I would, you'd be close to a net wash for curb opening. So I don't think you'll be losing anything on the street.
Yeah, that's not entirely clear, but.
There's a curb opening to the south.
I did drive by this one and it's, okay. Let's turn to, uh, the public. Anyone here wish to speak in favor of this petition? Anyone to speak in opposition to this petition? There goes our neighborhood input. Anything else?
And these were two-bedroom units, you said, right? Did we ask?
Two Xantheries.
Two Xantheries?
Twos and threes. Depends how they designed it, I guess.
So, uh, Mr. Chairman, two separate votes, one to approve the variance and one to waive the parking.
Yes.
Yeah.
Two separate votes. So one is the variance and one is the special permit?
Correct.
Building footprint is, okay, it's fifty-two deep, all right, fifty-two by thirty-four, that makes a little bit of sense.
I mean, they, they provided a, a maximum lot coverage on the plan. I hope they calculated the pavement and the building.
Right.
That's actually designed to have bluestone.
What's that?
Bluestone, they're not gonna do a pervious.
What do you mean, bluestone?
For the parking area. Where the parking spaces are, they weren't putting a pervious material, it was gonna be, uh, impervious, was gonna be pervious.
Well, that doesn't show that.
That, that's what, well.
So crushed stone parking lots, don't cut it.
Excuse me?
Said crushed stone parking lots, don't cut it for parking. So it's gonna have to be an improved surface, whether it's pervious asphalt, asphalt, or pavers. It's not going to be blue, crushed.
They would do a pervious, pervious, that's what I was told.
That's fine, but just when we get the site plan review.
I assumed that was bluestone.
Crushed stone, it won't be, it won't not be accepted.
Crushed stone doesn't work. Yeah, it's gonna be pervious, that's what I was told, because I asked the, the engineer, he says, how are you planning this for the lot coverage as well? All, all the water's gonna flow in the ground, we're using the material. I mistakenly just guessed it was bluestone.
We'll be able to do the site plan review.
These have, these have to be marked, because otherwise it's a free-for-all, so. And I'll get a complaint from the police department. Any other questions, kids?
I would do the special permit first.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, yeah. So we're looking for a special permit, uh, as to parking requirements. We have a four-unit building, we have six spaces drawn. What do you wish, guys?
I'll make a motion to deny.
I'll second.
Motion to deny with a second. On the motion, John Frank.
Yes.
Jim Calkins.
Yes.
Dan DePere.
Yes.
Ricky Sahadi.
Yes.
And Chairman Ferrer, yes.
You should still make, take a vote on the variance.
On the variance, yeah. So on the variance, uh, we're, uh, looking at the, uh, the four-unit.
Make a motion to deny.
I'll second.
Motion and second, uh, on the motion, John Frank.
Yes.
Jim Calkins. Dan DePere.
Yes.
Ricky Sahadi.
Yes.
Chairman Ferrer, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number four, Simpson Lane Realty LLC, care of attorney Mark L eleven, one thirty-six, one thirty-nine, Irving Street. Map J sixteen, lot twenty. The applicant seeks a variance to construct a three-family dwelling, waiving lot area and lot coverage in a G general zoning district.
For the record, again, attorney Mark L eleven, one three eight Rock Street, four of Massachusetts, representing the applicant on this property. And what this is, a property that, uh, the last couple, uh, within the last two years, had contained a, uh, a five-family residential unit. Uh, the building inspector, um, felt that we could not rebuild. Uh, he had his own reasons for that, believing that a, that a wall had to stand, although the walls were there and the foundation was there at the time of the fire. And required my client, uh, last year to tear down by an order the building altogether down to the foundation. So my client now has a, a large lot. The area again had a five-family unit that pretty much took up the entire parcel. There was no off-street parking on that property at the time. My client is now, uh, proposing to build, rebuild a brand-new three-family dwelling on this premises. And he will provide six parking spaces, two per, per unit on the property. Oh, there were?
Yeah.
Now, sound corrected, there were, he said there were four parking spaces of a five-unit building. But now there will be six parking spaces there with a residential. So this is asking just for you to waive the area and the lot coverage, because the use is permitted in this area. So we're asking that, again, this property that had had a building there for over a hundred years, uh, now be allowed to, instead of the five-unit that my client believed and at one point thought the building inspector agreed it could be rebuilt as a five-unit. is now short seven hundred feet to conform to allow a three-unit building. You're talking about a neighborhood that are all three, four, six, two-family unit buildings. Having this property with a, a three-family building, which is a small footprint that had been originally existing before, setback from the street that had not been before, where the original building went right up to the street before, provides a, a good buffer for the neighborhood. It allows the, all the traffic to come in the park on the property, and provides a usefulness of a property that we had believed at one point would have been, be able to rebuild, but, you know, sometimes not worth fighting City Hall and to provide something, then go through years of prolonged litigation. We think it's a good use, it's conforming to that neighborhood, but unfortunately are, are missing two of the, the dimensions that we can't conform with, which is area and lot coverage.
So on the sheet, seventy-three hundred square feet, so they need eight thousand for three.
So we're short...
Seventy-two, thirty-two.
Yeah. Seven hundred square feet roughly we're short. So it's de minimis when you're talking about the size of a lot in, in this neighborhood.
And coverage?
Lot coverage is supposed to be twenty-five percent. I think they said it's...
They give an actual calculation of total impervious area.
Yeah.
Which is just slightly more, so sixty-four percent, it was actually existing at sixty-two percent.
Right. Because they're putting more parking spaces down.
Correct.
So they took into account of the parking.
What, what side of the thirty-by-sixty unit will the points of egress be? I'm assuming these are townhouse style? So...
They're on the driveway side.
No need for any stoops, landings?
No.
So that you're gonna walk, open the door and you're gonna be on pavement? Nothing impeding that driveway of ten feet wide?
No. Because that, like I said earlier, that's shifted over the, the original foundation was more to the left.
No, no, I, I understand that, but I'm saying, right now, the new doors that you're gonna install, when you open the door, within eight inches, you're stepping onto the paved driveway.
Yes.
There's not gonna be an elevated length, so elevation-wise, you're gonna be okay not to provide steps, landings that may impede the width of this driveway.
Yeah, but we won't impede the driveway.
Okay. So you, so you're stuck with this footprint, just understand that.
So that bump out on the side, on the south side is basically an entrance foyer-type situation, or...
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I don't have any issues with it.
All right. Any other questions from the board?
Well, before the board does vote, so in response to the lot coverage issue?
Yeah.
We talked about this before, with, with the new implementation of site plan review, a small amount or even any amount of lot coverage increase, originally all the lot coverage calculations were based upon runoff. We now require infiltration components and, and everything else, so we can offset any increase in lot coverage by requiring some type of infiltration during site plan review.
Anyone in the audience here wishing to speak in favor of the petition? Is that a nod? No. Anyone wishing, not you. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? You're hearing none, it's the, to the board.
Second.
Okay, motion and second. On the motion, Ricky Sahadi?
Yes.
Dan DePere?
Yes.
Jim Cawkins? John Frank?
Yes.
And Chairman Prairie, yes?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening, we'll, maybe we'll see you next month if I can figure out where to get to parking.
Everybody else can find parking out there, so...
Come on.
Go to Belmont.
Put on your comfortable shoes, go.
She rents spaces, so...
We're at a number five. Paula Forsy, care of attorney Peter A. Salino, being portrayed this evening by 212 Barlow Street, MAP, J-10, Lot 61, and 1950 Pleasant Street, MAP, J-10, Lot 62. The applicant seeks variance relief from eighty-six, Attachment 1 and 2, the city of Fall River zoning ordinance, to divide all their property known as 212 Barlow Street, consisting of fifteen hundred and eighty square feet therefrom, and adding area to the property known as 1950 Pleasant Street, so that the water line for 1950 Pleasant Street is entirely within its boundaries. The property proposal requires waivers for front and side yard setback and lot coverage as it relates to 212 Barlow Street, and the newly created 1950 Pleasant Street requires waiver from lot area. The properties are located in the G Central and BN Neighborhood Shopping Zoning District.
Good evening. Scott Adams from Advanced Engineering Group, representing the applicants here on this matter. Simplistically, both of these properties are in, come, the same family of ownership. One of the family members is wishing to consider selling one of the properties in the near future, so they're trying to kind of clean up some outstanding issues. Both the water line and, we found out, the sewer line was installed in the same trench, goes on to the rear portion of the property, which is the 212 Barlow Street, which is owned by her mother. And that's where also their, their driveway is currently, and I got photos and pictures I can show you folks to show the, this area more clearly. So what the applicant's looking to do at 1950 is basically carve out a fifteen-foot strip that goes up to basically the existing edge of pavement that's there now, and then just allow basically what they've been, how they've been living for the past several decades here, to just be basically formalized. There's no building additions, no increase in pervious, no other setbacks, any of the buildings are gonna change, other than carving out that fifteen-foot strip. What's unique about this property, and kind of caused us to bring in Mr. Salino, and, and obviously conversations with the city, is the fact that it crosses two zoning lines. The BN zone is a shopping, the neighborhood shopping district, which technically doesn't even allow single or three-family dwellings within it. Majority of the properties fall within the G zone, which is, as you know, the general residence zone. For the most part, the parcels are generally consistent with the requirements of a G. They're not consistent at all with the requirements of a BN district. So, you know, four to five of the, of the BN district requirements, they don't meet either now or in the future. But majority of Zone G would be compliant for 1950 under its existing conditions, and it would also be compliant under its proposed conditions under Zone G. So that's, I guess, part of the conversation. It gets a little muddy, I guess, for lack of a better chance, with which, which relief we're seeking. But again, we're not adding any impervious, we're not increasing the, the coverage area. We're simply changing the internal lot line between the two parcels to include the driveway to the, to, that servicing and has been servicing 1950, and also their water and sewer line locations that are below grade. I do have a bunch of photos and boards, I'd be happy to pull them out. But you guys have been here for a while, so I don't wanna do it unless you really need, want me to. And I have handouts too, if you, if you want them, that has photos of the areas that show it from the street view, as well as different angles from up top.
Instead of boards, if you want...
Tell Attorney Salino to stay home tonight.
I have no issue with it, Mr. Chairman.
No.
Eliminating, you know, on their own grounds, what we try to ask people to do.
Right.
Get rid of these types of enclosures, so... Not an issue.
It's actually a common sense petition. Questions, guys? I'll ask the question. Anybody here wishing to speak in favor of the petition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? You're hearing none, let's, let's ask on the petition, gentlemen.
Move granting of the petition.
Second.
Questions on the petition, on the motion, rather? None on the petition, on the motion, rather? John Frank?
Yes.
James Cawkins?
Yes.
Dan DePere?
Yes.
Ricky Sahadi?
Yes.
And Chairman Prairie, yes?
Appreciate it, thank you.
Let Attorney Salino know there was no jujitsu involved tonight, because it's not needed.
I'm sure, I'm sure he'll be watching it.
Thank you.
He's three hours behind us right now.
Uh, where are we, number six?
Never said live.
What's that?
Said never said live.
Never said live. Victor Fagundo, 915 County Street, MAP, K-19, Lot 41. The applicant seeks a special permit to convert the pre-existing, non-conforming, mixed-use building into four residential apartment units, leaving two apartments on the upper level and converting the existing restaurant space into additional dwelling units, waiving lot area, lot coverage setbacks, number of units allowed, and parking requirement in G general zoning district. In an unprecedented quirk, the entire board has recused themselves because this is closing O'Gills, so that's...
I, I figured that could be a problem, but it's gonna happen anyways. So, good evening, for the record, Jeff Tolman from Northeast Engineers and Consultants. He had represented Vic Fagundo, the applicant for the, on the special permit for 915 County Street. The property, as you are well aware, is the O'Gills Restaurant, which is on the ground level. It's roughly around three thousand square feet gross floor area, and there are two residential apartment units above it. The property is located in the general residence G zone. The structure itself is non-conforming due to front, side, and rear setbacks, and the, the lot currently exceeds the lot coverage requirement. The use, the restaurant use of the, of the building is also non-conforming in nature, and the lot itself is non-conforming due to lot area. Does have, does have this sufficient frontage, but it does not meet the lot area requirement for the, for the second residential unit, that's what makes it non-conforming. So quite simply, what we're looking for is a special permit to convert the ground level, the restaurant portion of the building, into two residential apartment units, approximately fifteen hundred square feet gross floor, gross floor area each. What we are proposing to do, since it would no longer be required, is to take the existing loading area, which is located on the west side of the building, and add two off-street parking spaces. One per unit, one per additional unit that we're, we'd be adding. There's also the potential, within the two-stall garage, to provide two more, two additional off-street parking spaces, but that would, you know, require stacking, which I believe would still fall under the same relief that we're looking for in terms of the special permit for the parking requirements. You know, the proposed, you know, the proposed change to the structure would bring the, the structure into, closer into compliance with the zoning ordinance, and I would submit to the board that the proposed use, the proposed conversion of the restaurant into two residential apartment units would be, would not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, to the existing non-conforming use, simply because of the, the amount of parking that would be required for the two residential units, as opposed to a restaurant of that size, a three-thousand-square-foot restaurant, so... With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board might have.
How many units upstairs now?
Two.
Just two?
Yes. In the new units?
Oh, the existing and...
I, I wanna say the existing are good size, they're either three or four, I'm not a hundred percent positive. The new units, I would not like to restrict it, they're probably gonna be the same, either three or four, depending on how the layout ends up getting done downstairs. I mean, there's sufficient area there, these, these are good-sized units, so...
I always thought there were more upstairs, to be honest with you, so there's gotta be pretty big units.
They are, yeah, there was, I, I believe at one time there was a function room on the second floor that was converted into a residential unit, so that's...
No permits, of course, but... We're cleaning all that up right now.
Yes.
We're getting rid of a non-conforming commercial use in the G districts.
Yeah. Yep, I agree, I agree, I agree. Dangerous question, it doesn't really have to do with your petition. Where are the people, where are the apartments upstairs parking now, do we know?
On the street. Yeah, there, there's no off-street parking for the residents of, of the structure now, because of the driveway is used for the loading area for the restaurant.
Right.
They don't have access to the existing...
No. No.
That's access for peppers.
She leaves deliveries. Okay, so the, the spaces in the back would be assigned to these two units, the people upstairs can suddenly decide to...
Yeah, and, and which would make these, because of the ramp that they have for loading in the back, I mean, the units would be considered ADA compliant, ADA accessible. So with those parking spots in the back, they'd be able to access that with the ramp.
And there's always tons of off-street parking as long as the restaurant's not open.
Yeah, so the, the offset of that, and I also looked today, there is a, a, an assigned handicap space in front of the building now?
Right.
Which I'm assuming could be eliminated.
It's up to the city, though.
Providing, well, no, somebody would have to petition to have it taken down, but if it was for a restaurant use, then it could technically provide an additional space on the street.
And if somebody in the house was handicapped, that might...
Well, that's why in the back, they, they can actually provide accessibility with the ramp, so...
Yeah, the, the two units...
The second floor units wouldn't be accessible.
Yeah, they're not ADA compliant or accessible.
So you're saying there's gonna be twelve to sixteen bedrooms in this structure?
Potential, I wanna say, I, I, I'm not certain if they're three or four. I, I wanna, I think they might be three.
It'll, it'll tell you how many bedrooms are upstairs, if you get to the...
I think it might be three, I think it's a double pile.
It'll give you a total bedroom count, if you get the building square footage tab.
Total bedrooms, nine. Three full baths.
There you go. Two units, it says?
No.
Yeah, number of units, two.
You sure, you're looking at the right one?
Yeah, number of bedrooms, six.
Six, so two, three bedrooms, yeah.
That's what they're proposing downstairs, also three bedrooms.
I'm assuming, but it, they may be four, I, I...
Fifteen hundred square feet each, right?
Yes. Yeah, so chances are they're gonna be three.
Yeah.
But we don't have a layout of, you know, how that's gonna work out, so I...
If you're concerned with the, with the parking demand, you can limit it to three. Not that that's really gonna limit the number of people going into a three in comparison to a four.
Right.
It's a matter of kids either share a room, or they don't share a room.
And again, I mean, the parking demand with those two units, even if they are four, is gonna be far less than what the restaurant requires currently.
That's your upset, right?
Yeah.
They don't own it.
Like they did have it.
Yeah.
So if we vote to turn this down, will O'Gill stay open?
Unfortunately, no.
Sadly, no.
That's done. All right, anybody here to speak in favor? Be quiet. Anybody here to speak against? None, okay. What do we think, guys? We can have a, we can have a week for the restaurant some other day.
Remember, it's all special permit, no variances.
Correct.
So bifurcated?
Yeah.
Yep.
So I would make the proposal that, that I would make the motion that the proposal was not substantially more detrimental to the area.
You can put them together if you want.
And, and therefore, yeah, okay. And then the second part of that would be to, as requested.
You have a second? Motion and second, no conditions. Then on the motion, John Frank?
And, I'm sorry, that's with a total of four off-street parking spaces?
Yep.
Yes.
As presented on the plan.
Yeah, uh, yes.
Jim Cawkins?
Yes.
Dan DePere? I'm no on this one, you know, okay. Ricky Sahadi?
Yes.
Chairman Prairie, yes?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have the next one, too?
Yes.
Number seven, Gele Inc., zero Horton Street, MAP, K-19, Lot 103. The applicant seeks a variance to divide the existing parcel into two lots. Lot one would be six thousand seven hundred square feet with sixty-four, I'm sorry, sixty-eight point thirty-nine feet of furniture on Earl Street, and nine hun, ninety point three-three feet of furniture on County Street, on which a three-family dwelling townhouse would be built, waiving lot area and lot coverage. Lot two would be a five thousand square foot lot with fifty feet of furniture on Horton Street and eleven point oh-five feet of furniture on County Street, on which a single-family dwelling would be built, waiving lot coverage requirements. The property is located in the G general zoning district.
Okay, good evening, for the record, Jeff Tolman from Northeast Engineers and Consultants, representing the O'Gill Inc. on this application. This, this property is the O'Gills parking lot, which is located one block south of the restaurant, located between Earl Street and Horton Street on County Street. There is access, currently access, off of Earl Street on the north side, and... and an access that's currently blocked off, but there is a curb cut and an opening on Horton Street. What we're looking to do is to take this property and divide it into two lots. The property itself is located, again, in the general residence zoning district, similar to the restaurant. The parking lot was purchased by the owners of O'Gills in nineteen ninety-five, which was five years after the restaurant. So, as the restaurant got busy and they had a need for expanded parking, they purchased this property from the, I believe it was the funeral home that we had a previous application earlier tonight on, across the street that was in control of this. I think it was Schwinnard Funeral Home. So, again, they purchased this in nineteen ninety-five, used it for parking. You know, business at the restaurant has slowed down quite a bit, there is no real need for this. It's, it is still used on occasion, from what I understand, but it's primarily used by the commercial auto repair facility across the street. They use it to park cars more so than the restaurant does at this point. So, what we're looking to do is to create these two lots. The two lots themselves, lots one and two, would be considered conforming lots. Lot one would be a conforming six thousand, sixty-seven hundred square foot lot with legal frontage of ninety point three-three feet on County Street, which would exceed the frontage on Earl Street of the sixty-eight point three-nine. And then lot two would be a conforming five-thousand-square-foot lot with fifty feet of frontage on Horton Street, where a single-family house could be built. So since the lots are conforming, the reason we are here is that we're seeking a variance to allow a third unit to be constructed on lot one. Given the size of the lot, the sixty-seven hundred square feet, that would be sufficient for a two-family style house, which is allowed in the G-zone. But what we're looking for is to add an additional unit, a third unit, on that lot for a structure that would comply to the zoning setbacks on that property. And the reason we're doing this is, we feel we have a hardship, given the shape of this lot. It's such an irregular-shaped lot that we're losing, you know, some value on the single-family house lot, lot two. It is rather irregular-shaped. In an effort to, rather than just put a straight line going across the back, we shifted that line eight and a half feet to the north in order to get the five-thousand square feet required for the lot. But by doing so, it is a very odd-shaped lot, but it does, again, comply to zoning. So lot one, again, would be sufficient for a two-unit, but because of the hardship that we're dealing with, with the shape of the lot, as opposed to if we had, you know, an eleven thousand seven, seven hundred square foot lot with, you know, seventy-eight feet deep, seventy-eight feet deep, which both these lots are, we'd be able to have more conforming lots, we'd be able to have like a sixty-five-foot-wide conforming single-family house lot and a like eighty-five-foot-wide conforming two-family house lot. But, you know, there is quite a bit of loss, the value of the lots, especially the single-family house lot, due to the configuration required in order to bring that into compliance with zoning. So that's the reason we're here for requesting this particular variance. The other thing we're looking for here is relief on lot coverage. The lot coverage currently for the entire property is around ninety percent. So it's well over the allowed lot coverage in the G-zone. What we're looking to do, based on the designs that we have before you, is to ask for an increase in lot coverage requirement, which would be a drastic reduction in the lot coverage from where it stands now. Lot one would go from ninety-four percent down to sixty-nine percent with this proposed design, and lot two would go from eighty-six percent down to forty-five. Both of the lots would have the required off-street parking spots, based on the number of units on them, so that would not be an issue, the structures themselves would comply to the zoning setbacks. The only dimensional relief that we'd be looking for, again, would be the lot coverage issue. But, again, starting at ninety percent and dropping it down drastically on both lots, it's still gonna be an improvement over the existing condition. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board might have.
I have a question about lot two.
Yes.
And this is in regard to the retaining wall.
Yes.
That runs through that. And I know it's high in some sections, I don't know how high it is on the Horton Street end that, you know, where the house is gonna sit. So you have an eleven-foot setback from the edge of the building to the property line.
Correct.
But, how big is that concrete retaining wall along the side of that house? And then how much space is left between the house and the retaining wall?
Well, there'd be about, I can't tell you exactly, but it would be about four or five feet, which would be sufficient for a walkway. I'm showing it, it would be right around four and a half feet. In that wall, that concrete retaining wall, tapers down to zero, basically, at Horton Street.
Yeah.
Then it rises as you go north towards Earl Street, and then where it turns ninety degrees and runs parallel to Earl Street is where it's at its highest.
Okay.
And then it tapers back down as you get closer to Earl Street.
So you get beyond the house before this thing starts blocking windows, basically?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Correct. And the idea would be to keep in place if possible, without having to relocate it, because that would be a considerable expense as well, in order to gain, I mean, there's sufficient land there, so it may be worthwhile, but...
Well, what's interesting is the owner of, what number Horton is, uh... I'm sorry, that's, yeah.
One ninety-eight.
Are they, are they just, you know, are they happening, are they using that land up across the top of the wall?
No, it's all vegetated.
It is.
It's all overgrown and stuff like that, yeah. Now, they have a pretty decent-sized parking facility on that lot, because there's nine units on that particular lot, yeah. So, and again, I mean, with the three units that we're proposing, when you look at the previous application directly across the street they had earlier tonight and the number of units that they were requesting, and also, when you look at the surrounding area, you know, it's mostly multifamily dwellings in excess of, you know, two units, anywhere from three and above on these properties. So we don't think we're out of line with the neighborhood by requesting that additional unit.
Yeah, and there's some, there's some townhouse alley units further down Earl Street that are similar in nature to this.
Yep.
With the garage under type situation, if I'm not mistaken. And the parking makes sense, so you've got, so you've got a single opening on Earl Street, a single opening then on County Street.
Yeah, we're gonna utilize, the existing curb cuts, we're able to utilize those to get four parking spots off of Earl, and then the same thing on Horton Street. We'd have to put a new curb cut in off of County Street to get those two parking spots for unit C. In the multifamily.
Two-story housing units, I understand?
Yes, yes.
So each one twenty-five...
The building layout is similar to the one on Spring Street, the townhouse style.
Yeah.
Yep.
Compact, but nice, okay. Before I turn to the board for questions, Dan, what do you think?
I have no issue with it at all. All the way down to technically, I mean, lot coverage relief isn't required because you're reducing the lot coverage, so. I thought, very well done, very well laid out.
Yeah, I'm loving the triplex lot, that's super well done. Very nicely done, even though the single is nicely done.
So having said that, and I know this was part of an early discussion...
The helicopter bed.
You are bound by the footprint shown on these plans, period. Well...
But if we're not asking for a relief on lot two?
No, no, lot two, no.
Okay, no, and that's the only one I don't know...
The lot coverage.
Yeah, we can certainly behold to the, what was it, forty...
Which shouldn't be unlimited, anyway.
Forty-five percent?
No, but it's technically a hundred.
Well, no, it's technically eighty-six, so we held that eighty-six, I think we're gonna be fine, okay. No, that was the only thing I wanted clarification on, because it is a conforming lot, and we are conforming to setbacks, we're really not asking for any relief on that particular lot.
Yeah, no, my only problem with that, I just needed to understand where that whole retaining wall situation was, so.
Sure.
It's a little odd.
Yep.
All right. What, that's, more than, more has happened in that neighborhood tonight than...
I know, for an upgrade, right?
In the last seventeen years.
It's a good thing we didn't pave all these streets, maybe ripping them up.
Maybe now we can get them cleaned up, you don't have to break an axle driving on County Street. Any questions from the board, guys? I'll ask it because it's a law. Anybody here in favor? Anyone here we should speak against? Okay. All right, the wake is...
As requested in the plan.
Second.
God, we give away variances, man, we're so cool. We have a motion second, on the motion, any questions? Then on the motion, Ricky Sahadi.
Yes.
Dan DePere.
Yes.
Jim Calkins.
Yes.
John Frank.
Yes.
Chairman Prairie, yes?
Thank you very much.
Good luck with it, guys.
That's awesome.
All right, eight was gone, citizens input. Approval of minutes, I heard we have no minutes.
A table in there. Yeah, I need a motion to table that.
Motion to table.
Motion to table on the minutes. Can I get a second?
Second.
On that motion to table in the minutes, by simple vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Then I will take...
Ricky, you didn't say aye.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll take that as a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone, that was fun.
Thank you, thanks for coming out tonight.